Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. Welcome to this regular meeting of Boca Raton's Community Redevelopment Agency. It's Monday, August 25th, 2025. The time is 1:30 PM. Thank you all for attending. Please, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And today, we will ask Mr. Daley to please call the roll.
Chair Wigder?
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Thankful to be here.
Commissioner Drucker?
Here.
Commissioner Nocles?
Here.
Commissioner Singer?
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any corrections or amendments to the minutes of July 14th, 2025? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Very well. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. There are no presentations today, nor is there any quasi-judicially-related public hearings. So now, we'll turn in our CRA to public requests related to our downtown. If you would like to speak about anything in our CRA, you may come to the microphone. You have up to three minutes. Please, Bob. Please state your name and address, and you have up to three minutes.
Bob Tucker, 2609 Northwest 23rd Way in beautiful and bountiful Boca.
Thank you.
I'm voicing my unwavering support for the downtown campus upgrade and here to assure you that I join a majority of other citizens who believe this project is vital to Boca's future. As our city embarks on its second century, this project literally lays the foundation for continued growth and prosperity, ensuring our needs are met for the decades ahead. Without it, we will wither, our world-class services will shrink, and our stellar reputation will tarnish. Families will move to more progressive cities, and we will no longer be a mecca for those escaping high taxes, high prices, and high crime. I voted for each one of you, and thousands of others did as well. We entrust our faith in you to use your wisdom, your experiences, and your many other talents to represent us and make decisions that are in the best interests of the city. Your passion for Boca is... Morning, noon, and night, I see you making sacrifices from your personal lives to be part of the fabric of our community by attending meetings and participating in community events. So it was shameful and downright mean when you recently stood at this podium and said that you don't care about residents who live east of I-95 because you don't live there. Nothing could be further from the truth. I encourage you to ignore the distractions, be bold, and think big. Focus on our future and fight for it, and take us across the finish line. And that concludes today's pep talk from Coach Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Drucker. Anyone else? It's public requests. Public requests in our CRA? Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? We will close the time for public requests, and we'll proceed to resolutions and regular public hearings for which there are one. Mr. Daley, please read the title of the resolution.
A Resolution of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency Authorizing Use of CRA Funds for Providing the Planning Services Included in Agreement Number 2025-437 with Bill Spakowski, Consistent with the Amended Downtown Plan, Providing for Appeal or Providing an Effective Date.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chair Wigder. This is Resolution 2025-06 CRA, which is a resolution authorizing the CRA to reimburse to the city $100,000 in payment for work on the campus LDRs and the TOD LDRs. Ms. Sita from Development Services is here to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? Any questions? Yes, please. Can you tell us the substance of these amendments to the downtown plan?
This has to do with the campus master plan. This is the LDR contract for the campus master plan. The contract itself was approved in June 2025, so this is simply the reimbursement of that existing contract. So to reimburse CRA, to reimburse the city, for the CRA to reimburse the city.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay. Well, now we will open the public hearing on this. Any member wishing to speak on this reimbursement amendment, please come. You'll have up to three minutes. Oh, Mr. Ungin.
Jonathan Ungin, 6501 Congress Avenue.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council, and/or CRA, whatever you're called. So, wanted to speak on just the concept of this. So, just to kind of make the public aware, this is kind of the reorganization of the DRI, the DDRI. To call it Transit Oriented Developments to allow for much greater development, let alone in the government campus, but across people's private properties. Basically, the office equivalency sham, calling it, you know, no density in essence in the downtown, is expiring. And the reality is, this person is coming in to envision how they can throw more development down the downtown's throat. The reality is, is the downtown isn't the only part of this vibrant city. We're sitting in the most vibrant part of town that is the ripest for development. And the reality is, we continue to not, as council and staff, who ironically, isn't involved in the government campus at all, by not, I'm not talking about Mr. Lou Kasich, but I'm talking about Development Services, ironically, is not involved, has not held up to a single discussion here on the government campus, whether they think that plan is good or not, or what their concerns are with it. And instead, this city has just relied on consultants, such as this individual who we're hiring, such as CBRE, who we're seeing their major issues as a consultant, whether it being previous litigation that was not disclosed in People's Dex, that may have killed 100 people, kind of relevant, I would imagine. But that's what your consultant didn't point out to this, or maybe they did, and that would be good to hear from each and every one of you, whether you were aware of that litigation that cost apparently $400 million out of a billion-dollar settlement, that Surfside collapse that cost 100 people's lives. So, again, I'm not against any necessarily development in the downtown. I just think it's sad that we continue to only focus on the downtown, on the quote-unquote TODs or the government campus. And it'd be good to hear you talk about planning in this part of town that's the ripest for it, and I look forward to coming back up during the workshop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. This is still the public hearing regarding the resolution. Anyone else want to speak about the resolution? Twice? Once? Twice? We will close the public hearing and ask for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2025-06 CRA?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Council members? Any discussion?
I think it makes sense to continue with planning and having the CRA fund the relevant portion for it.
Thank you. I agree 100%. Mr. Ungin, you know, in the conversations that we've had, that I agree with you, that I do believe that this location, this northern sector, is the place where we're going to have to consider a lot of our future housing needs. That doesn't mean that the downtown is completed. We still have to do things there. We still have to fix this there. This resolution updating this 4035 to include the downtown campus is also an opportunity for us to begin a kind of pilot program, as we do need to reimagine the entire downtown matrix as 4035 is expiring in 2028. So the fact that we're starting now, a couple years early, because of the downtown campus plan, I think it's helping us, in a certain respect, do this pilot program, and we can work on those things. But again, I don't disagree with you there, you know, and that is a reason why we are moving functions up there. We're more centralizing some of our services, which I think is the right thing to do. And there's a lot of room for the necessary growth here, for, you know, for workforce housing, for some regular housing, for diverse, you know, opportunities, maybe even some student housing, because I know the students in my class are commuting a very great distance just to get here because they cannot find a place to live. And that weighs on me. I do think about that. So I do appreciate your comments. That being said, please, Mr. Daley, call the roll.
Chair Wigder?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Drucker?
Yes.
Commissioner Nocles?
Yes.
Commissioner Singer?
Yes.
Very good. Motion passes five to zero. There is no other business to consider, so now we'll turn to the Director's Report and our CRA budget. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chair Wigder. Stephen Timberlake, Financial Services Department, Special Projects Manager, is going to present an overview of the CRA's budget for the coming fiscal year.
Very good.
He's joined by CFO and Deputy City Manager Jim Zervis.
Mr. Timberlake, Mr. Zervis, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair. Members. My name is Stephen Timberlake, Special Projects Manager for the CRA. I'm going to present a workshop of the Community Redevelopment Agency Budget for 2526. So, starting with some of the achievements for 2425, we completed the Sanborn Square Safety Barriers with the help of Public Works Engineering and Recreation Services. And then, we also coordinated the evaluation and expansion of the Boca Connect Program. And then, we completed the evaluation phase of Palmetto Park Road Connectivity and Mobility And then, other goals and achievements include the upgrading the aesthetics of the downtown roadways and sidewalks, beginning the implementation for the transit-oriented community, some Meijner Park Amphitheater roof replacements and structural reviews, as well as supporting the Bright Line train station expansion. And then, we are working on reviewing the downtown logo and brand messaging to ensure reliability and relevance. So, for the downtown, there are 941,000 square feet of office equivalents yet to be approved, and then, 845,549 square feet approved but yet to be built. That is made up of 631 residential units and 308 hotel rooms. All these numbers are as of the last year-end. So, for the CRA itself, it operates through an interlocal agreement with the city. The agreement was last updated in a resolution in 2009, but essentially, all of the direct staff is on contract through the city. For the budget itself, all of the budget activity occurs in our operating fund, which provides for the agency's day-to-day operations through city staff and development services, police services, code enforcement, public works, engineering, recreational service, and financial services. So, the vast majority of the Community Redevelopment Agency revenue is from the taxable value. The taxable value has a frozen base of $73.8 million, which is the red line on the bottom of this graph, and the tax increment for budget purposes this year is $3.1 billion. So that equates to roughly $26.7 million in tax increment, and then, all told, in addition to that, there's about another $5 billion in additional revenue that the CRA will serve. So, our total CRA revenue budget includes a $39 million fund balance carrying over from this year to next, that I'll talk about in more details later, but that's the graphical breakdown. For the expense side, the main departments, administration, parking services, code compliance, police, public works and engineering, capital LA, and the repayment to the city are the main areas. And then, there's the breakdown graphically of the $60 million. So, the $30 million worth of fund balance, we are holding over from this fiscal year to next fiscal year for three specific projects. The Transit Oriented Community Redevelopment in the downtown, various Meijner Park improvements, and the CRA East-West Pedestrian Connectivity Consultant and Implementation. For new positions for the next fiscal year, there is 50% of a customer service representative for parking, as well as an additional CRA police officer and a cultural arts administrator. Capital projects for the year include the Transit Oriented Community, the CRA Roadwalk and Sidewalk, Meijner Park Improvements, the first year of that, downtown traffic lighting, as well as downtown Palmetto Park Road Connectivity, our CRA Parking Analysis, and our CRA East-West Pedestrian Connectivity Consultant and Implementation, as well as the Downtown Transit Program and Meijner Park Amphitheater. We also have decorative streetlights, the Sanborn Square renovations continuing, downtown hardscape and downtown walkability improvements, and then, a relocation of public buildings carryover from this year, and downtown park electrical upgrades. The full CRA budget will come to you in two meetings for approval, so I will be happy to answer any questions between now and then.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Ms. Nocles?
Can I just ask one about the Palmetto Park Road Connectivity and Mobility Study and the dates that you have Jeff Speck penciled in for? Is that in January?
I don't know the details on the project. I'm sorry. I'll find out for you and respond at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Just that Mr. Speck's work is going to be on January 14th and 15th. That's the actual in-city planning activity.
Thank you. A couple questions. First of all, in terms of the tax increment financing that you showed there, it was an earlier slide. Obviously, Mr. Zervis and I have had many conversations about this. How long does the city get to use these funds for? Does this ever expire, or do we get to use these forever?
These are CRA funds, not city funds.
Okay.
And the statute states that they have to be used in a given fiscal year unless they are held on to for specific projects, which is what we are doing this year.
Right. And how long is our CRA in existence for? Or, Mr. Kaler?
The CRA expiration date?
Yes.
It's 2042.
2042. And in 2042, what happens in terms of tax increment financing?
Yeah, so in 2042 will be the last year the agency receives tax increment. So after that, and the agency expires, that tax increment flows back to the original taxing jurisdiction. So the city will retain its portion of the tax increment. The Beach and Park District and the county will both do the same.
Thank you. My understanding is that it's somewhere around 40%, 40 cents on the dollar, is that we're keeping of the tax increment?
That's roughly correct.
Something like that.
Yeah, that's close.
But until that time, from now until 2042, the CRA's obligation is to invest its tax increment in the downtown infrastructure, programming, and services to basically create, right? The obligation is to create an independent tax base that then will not need to further burden the taxpayers. Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding. Chairman Wigder, the redevelopment agencies were created in order to create a funding mechanism, to make investments in a geographical space, to then incentivize private development to create more value within that jurisdiction and more economic activity. So that is kind of the concept behind redevelopment, is exactly how you explained it.
Thank you. Unfortunately, like many cities, we have a homeless population here, too. Many of us volunteer with them, try to understand a little bit about how we can help. I know we have homeless outreach. I know we have CRA officers specifically for the downtown. I know, Mr. Brown, we signed an interlocal agreement to have the hot team a little that's just downtown. But it's not just downtown. It's citywide. Pardon me. But the idea is, or the question to you, Mr. Brown, is, do you think we could be doing more? What could we do? Should the CRA have an obligation to maybe fund a little more services or some sort of outreach or social, some sort of, you know, social outreach or something like that? You know, some sort of, you know, council person or, you know, council to try to help these people?
Police Services Department, including the hot team members from Palm Beach County, provide services citywide, which also includes the CRA. Providing additional services may not necessarily, only in Boca Raton, may not necessarily be the best course of action. They should probably better be provided regionally because it's really a regional issue. We might consider contributing to a regional effort, but I think if we offer specific services in our downtown, then we will attract more people to come to make use of those services. And that may not be the best result. We're certainly looking at different options for providing service. The county has provided the hot team, and their purpose, Homeless Outreach Team, HOT, is to provide connection to services for those who are experiencing homelessness, create programs to move people away from homelessness rather than providing them services that allow them to stay in homelessness.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Ms. Drucker?
Thank you. So, I think it's a bigger conversation for today's meeting, so I'm not one about, like, passing the buck to the next generation. We have a homeless and unhoused population that is in Boca Raton. When cities grow throughout the country, you see it, you've heard it in legislation, you've heard it throughout. So, for us to say that we're going to do all this stuff and deter people from coming here, it's a larger conversation. It's not going to be made in a silo. It's going to be made with everyone on this council and staff, and everyone has to show up to the table, whether it's the nonprofits or otherwise. But I'm not going to sit here today and say that we're going to do X, Y, and Z without really vetting what the issue is at hand. So just by saying that we're going to transfer from here because we're not going to serve these people food if they're starving, I think that's really inhumane and not something that I could get behind. So, we're either going to have to have a workshop, we're either going to have to have a larger conversation, we're either going to have to do it individually, but it's just, I don't agree with some of the things that I've been hearing as of late, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone out there understands that. We do have an issue. We're trying to address it. We're trying to work with the county, but we're also going to have to have ways that we do it so that we can control it. And just by passing it out, and you're saying that those people, it always kind of affects me when we mention people, like, those people. Those people are sometimes people that we know that are going to those locations, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I share the sentiment. I bring up the issue because it cannot just be, quote, you know, swept under the rug or something. It's something that we're all involved with. We all see about it. We talk to people at multiple jurisdictional levels about it. We've talked to people at the county about it. I have had conversations with the new county attorney, Ms. Cox, about it as well, and there's, there are diversionary programs that are being initiated with respect to drug addiction and mental illness that are countywide, that are regional, that I think are important for us to consider. But you're right, it's important to have this kind of larger question, and we're just touching on it, and just having one or two police officers downtown is certainly not enough. But I talk, and I know we all talk to the police officers who work, you know, in these critical industries, in this critical area, and they know a lot of these people personally and really are looking out for their welfare, so I appreciate all the efforts. Yes, Mr. Brown?
If I may, thank you. I just want to make sure the public's very clear, because I think they might get confused about suggesting that one line item in a CRA budget reflects any portion, because it's a small scintilla and small fraction of what the services the city provides holistically. We've got dozens of trained counseling officers. We've been doing a very proactive approach for years, and we found that the very small, comparatively small homeless population we have in our city, they're known to people and typically refuse the services that we try to provide. I needn't belabor the point now of the countless examples of where our police officers and other city staff members have provided meaningful services to help those who have housing issues and other issues, including addiction or mental health, get connected with family, get connected with resources, and get services. We are doing many things, including our cooperation with the county, the hot team, our cooperation with other nonprofits, staging more events, but there's daily intervention. So, again, this budget is not reflective of the holistic and important efforts we have to deal with, again, which is a nationwide problem, but we are less affected, and we're trying to get down to zero. And we are frankly, in terms of our point-in-time count, better than any other city I know of in South Florida. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, I don't disagree. Again, I just, I see things and I read things online where sometimes people focus just on the downtown, and it's important to make sure that people have the right information about what we're providing, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else on the budget for the downtown?
Nothing further on the budget, just as an additional report to clear up apparent misunderstanding on Mr. Ungin's part. Mr. Ungin stated earlier, the Development Services is not involved in the government campus planning in any way, and that could, is certainly not the case. Mr. Shad, Ms. Sita, many of the staff in Development Services have devoted numerous hours to the planning side of that project, making sure that what we're seeing makes sense from a planning perspective, looking at the plans that Tara and Frisbee have provided us, working with them on what's the best plan, how do land development regulations relate to that, how do we have proper regulations? So, to say that they have not been involved and not provided any input is just not correct. That's a misunderstanding.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Kaler, any report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no report.
Commissioners, any report? Mr. Thompson?
No report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker?
No report. Thank you.
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I have a brief report that I would like to get through that piggybacks on our budget Thank you very much. Just giving a recap, as Mr. Zervis had said, our CRA was formed in the 1980s. Our tax increment financing helps us finance specific improvements and services to encourage economic development. As Mr. Zervis said, we have about 16 years left, absent legislation. There was legislation in Tallahassee this past session to terminate CRAs earlier. It's a concern because it might expedite some of the work. That has to be very carefully planned. After this will happen, we'll revert to our normative property tax disbursements between the city, county, and other agencies, for which we get about 40 cents on the dollar. It's important to note that our CRA TIF does not replace property taxes. It is a funding mechanism. It's important that we use these funds now, timely, to do the infrastructure projects that we have to do. Roads, pipes, lights, sidewalks, all the things that Mr. Timberlake talked about today. These economic development projects will be considered an investment into our future. This investment, as Mr. Tucker said before, is to create additional tax base to avoid undue burdens to taxpayers prior to this expiration date, to avoid funding gaps. It requires significant and continued planning from our staff, Mr. Brown, the whole team. Our budget reflects that. And of course, this amended downtown plan continually gets amended every year or every time there's a change. Likewise, previous councils, some of which are here today, council members, approved the Bright Line train station many years ago. To me, this was an affirmation that we're making a commitment to encourage transit-oriented developments in our downtown as part of our economic development investments and regional transportation planning. The idea for regional transportation planning is to
The idea for regional transportation planning is to keep cars off the road, you do so by mixed uses. So this was many, many years ago. The council voted to have a TOD down here with the Brightline train station, not to just give people a reason to go to the Miami Heat games or Orlando to Disney World, but to get off the train and come here and spend some money. And the truth is, if we're not going to continue these investments and do something really exciting, you know, do something special in this downtown, then we never should have built the thing. Or, God forbid, eventually the train will stop coming here, and that scares me more. That's what I'm concerned about. We have an obligation to continue this. Our CRA budget reflects a lot of commitments to many things. Completing our downtown infrastructure completes our economic base, it's important to our city, important, it's listed in our downtown plan, everything is on the internet. It provides services, as we discussed significantly, for public safety, sanitation, security, but also to invest in our parks downtown and our rec and our community services and our new community center for which we're looking at. It's in our downtown plan, it should be holistic, right? We're updating it now, and through 2028, the new 4035, we're going to be doing this update. It's got to be holistic in terms of a connected downtown plan, it's got to be safe, walkable, bikeable, things that we're, that we care about. It's got to be connected, easy to get from place to place, right? We've got to use some of this money to improve traffic downtown. I'm sure we all hear you sitting up here, you know, traffic can be exasperating, it can be bad, especially during rush hour. Now is the time for us to do, be creative. Like Mr. Camacho said, you know, a couple weeks ago, maybe we could be creative with the county to improve traffic downtown, because Palmetto's a county road. We can activate open space, maybe we can get some pocket parks, even more recreation, and activate these parks. It's really sad when we go drive there every day and all you see is a few homeless people there. And we've got to activate and create a mixture of uses. I think these are things that we all care about and that we're all working on, even though sometimes, you know, we stand apart on it, we can be working together to create this. We're doing some really exciting innovative things there, of course. We approved an opportunity to conduct the pilot program with Guidant, this autonomous vehicle, that's starting initially in Meisner Park, and of course, our Boca Connect, Boca Circuit, to do on-demand shuttle service. Again, another opportunity to reduce traffic and keep cars off the road. Again, in many respects, our downtown is a pilot program to include these in other places in the city. I think it's a great place to do that. There's so much to do here. You can see our whole team is working to improve this downtown and create these investments. I really want us to work together, I do, we can. But we've got to plant these seeds together, we've got to work with the teams, with everyone to plan this together. We can plan something great if we work together, but just to say that we're going to do nothing, that is not an option, because that's not an investment, that is an abandonment. Thanks very much. With nothing further, this meeting is adjourned at 2:03 PM and we'll reconvene with a workshop in a few minutes.
Good afternoon and welcome to a workshop meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Monday, August 25th, 2025, the time is 2:07 PM. Our first item of business is presentations today, and we have a presentation from our wonderful city staff on an update on our Boca Raton Centennial. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Amy DiNorsio and Anne Marie Connolly, our centennial stars, are going to present an update on where we've been so far and what we're planning for the rest of this centennial year and beyond.
Good afternoon, Council. Anne Marie Connolly, Director of Communications and Marketing. Amy, you want to introduce yourself?
Amy DiNorsio, Amphitheater and Community Events Manager.
So as you all know, we are in the thick of celebrating our centennial year. This is just a little bit of an overview, we launched a website in January of this year promoting the centennial, all of the activations, initiatives, events, even a merch store. As you can see, we've had a lot of interest, especially in the Boca 100 Hawaiian shirt, which we have to pay kudos to City Manager George Brown for that idea, so we're coming out with version two in this next half of our centennial, but we've been driving a lot of traffic here, this is where everybody can find information related to all the fun initiatives that we have going on. The first part of our centennial was really focused on bringing the community together through various events, and now our second half of the centennial is really focused on storytelling. So we recently completed Boca Raton Untold, which was a partnership with Lynn University, one of our centennial partners that has been really integral in helping us telling the stories of various pioneers within the city through a video series. With our six videos, we have over 50,000 views, and it's been a really great testament to all the great stories that have come out from our history. In addition, our Ode to Boca program, which is a spinoff of the Zip Ode program with Oh Miami, we've had a great partnership with them as well. We've had over 1,000 odes submitted, a majority of that with our partnership through Palm Beach County School District, which we're excited to announce that we'll continue to incorporate the Ode to Boca program within their 25-26 school year curriculum. So K through high school, it'll be introduced within one of their classes to provide an ode to their city. Additionally, we've had our community partners do various workshops related to the Ode to Boca to incentivize the community to publish theirs, and we have a few more that are upcoming. And then, Ode to Boca has also been a catalyst to inspire public art projects, specifically plastic poetry, BRIC did a tenant exhibition, and we have an upcoming public art project with the MPA stage doors that Amy will provide some information to in a little bit. And in progress, we're excited to announce the introduction of Voices to Boca, that is a spinoff or inspired by StoryCorps, and that's candid recordings of our residents, whether that be with a mother and daughter, or two best friends, or neighbors, and how they met, but it's just a little snippet of the various stories that weave together our community. So that's in partnership with Flamingo House, we just launched it, and if anybody's interested, if you go to our website at Boca100.com, you can put in a submission to be selected for that storytelling program.
So, centennial events, we have had a busy year with events. We have had five events completed so far. The biggest was the weekend, the big centennial weekend, where we had the concert at the Meisner Amphitheater featuring Weezer, and the following night, we had the drone show at BRIC. Of course, we had it at BRIC because of the historical significance of that location to the city, so that was just a really unique experience. We had about 10,000 people between those two events, it was a wonderful weekend. The upcoming, some highlights, we really have the Centennial Decades Concert on October 25th at the Meisner Amphitheater. So the Festival of the Arts Boca did a centennial concert, it's a big band concert through the decades, and they had a multimedia presentation that was curated by the Historical Society. It was the closing night of the Festival of the Arts in March, and it was so well-received and people just really loved it, that the city, as a gift to our residents and the community, we are bringing it back as a free, the same exact concert, but free to the public on October 25th, so I hope everybody marks their calendars for that. We have another event that's in collaboration with Oh Miami, again, at BRIC. And then, another highlight, the Centennial Gala, that's not, that's not our event, but just of note, November 9th is the Addison's actual centennial. So that building, of course, the first building by Addison Meisner, will celebrate its 100 years, and they will be hosting a gala that will benefit the Historical Society. Public art, so public art has been a huge part of the centennial celebrations. Of course, we started, you can see the picture here, the sculpture in Sanborn Square that was inspired by the old, the historic entryway sign. We also have a number of other projects that are inspired by Ode to Boca in that partnership that we've had with Oh Miami. So again, that's like, you know, what we, they're odes that are voices of our residents, things that we've heard about people talking about Boca and what they mostly love about Boca. So inspired by that, we've had plastic poetry, we've had two plastic poetry installations, so this ties into sustainability, too, as well. These are five-inch, they're recycled plastic those letters are made of, and then they're turned into public art projects. You can see the one at the downtown library in the bottom corner, that's Olivia, she's a third grader, and you can see on her website, you can see her actually reading her ode as well. And now she is a published poet, and she actually has a permanent art installation, too. So we have more of those coming up as well. Also in progress, we have, so the Meisner Amphitheater, we are repainting the stage doors, we've put a call out for the artist, and it's inspired by the Ode to Boca as well. So really something about a downtown or, you know, about the city, and we've received the artist renderings, and we have an internal committee that's doing some selections for that. That will be unveiled, I think, in November. We have other civic publishing related to Ode to Boca, and then we have our big centennial legacy project that has, that is a big art, public art component at the Wildflower Park. A little more about that, so the Wildflower Centennial Legacy Art Project, so the pavilion that's in Wildflower is going to be, there will be four mosaics on all four sides of it, it'll be incredible. Anybody who has seen the one at Sugar Sand Park, it's, the artwork is, is made into tiles, and then the tiles are broken and then reinstalled into a beautiful, it's a lot more interesting, a lot more, it lasts longer, it will be guaranteed at least 10 years, and that will beautify the park, as well as there's asphalt art on the splash pad, and then if you recall, there will also be the swings, we're bringing back the swings. But the artist who has been commissioned for this public art project, she is actually MFA and an assistant professor, graduate director at FAU, so she's local. She also has a lot of accolades, she is currently in an inaugural Emerging Artist Residency at the Nort Museum and Emerging Artist Fellowship at the Nort Museum and Cultural Council of Palm Beach, Palm Beach County. So she is, comes with us with a lot of accolades, and she's already done, you can see here, this is a community workshop that she hosted at Wildflower Park, she's also visited the Historical Society, so these artists, the artwork will be of historical and community ties, and it'll be really interesting, it's going to be really lovely, and she's a really incredible and very well-respected artist. So these are the swings, these will, you may have seen these, we had a temporary installation, it's called Mi Casa, Your Casa, it was very popular, and it really activated Wildflower Park, we have some data to support that, and we are purchasing four of them, so this will be a permanent installation in the four centennial colors, and we're honestly really looking forward to that as well. So the timeline for some of these, so, so the other thing is, so Wildflower Park and the boat, the Silver Palm Park connect, there's an underpass under the bridge, and the Public Works and Engineering is, has commissioned and artwork to be done, and there'll be some decorative fencing underneath the bridge and some painting on the, on the. decorative fencing underneath the bridge, and some painting on the columns underneath the bridge. That will all be done in September. That is all underway. The designs and the renderings for the mosaics and the splash pad in Wildflower Park, those are underway, and the installation will begin in November. December, the swings will come, and just heads up that there will be some park closures intermittently related to whatever, you know, the painting and the preparation that we have to do, and the art installation and the splash pad. So just, that's of note. And our, the unveiling, so our target date is December 6th, so everybody should mark their calendar. That's when you should come and see the increasingly beautified Wildflower Park. We all know it's a lovely, incredible park, but this will be even more incredible, a gift, you know, to mark the centennial. And it will also, another note, it will be followed, you all will be getting an update next, at the next CRA meeting, at the next council meeting, at the workshop from Recreation about the activations, a lot of activation and events that are being planned for Wildflower Park. So we're going to increase this beautification, and then we have a lot of other plans to, that you'll be learning about. And I think you'll be very excited about those.
So a lot of this could not have been done without our sponsors and partners, which are listed on your screen. We have a total of 13 sponsors and partners that have dedicated time, you know, to making this a really community-wide, community-partner incentivized initiative. So a special thank you to all of them. Some of the initiatives executed by those partners, Beach and Park District, they did a passport program where participants were able to visit the various BPD city parks and get involved in various programs and initiatives, and if they completed the passport, they received a beautiful Boca Raton Centennial towel. Lynn University, you can see in the second picture, they integrated the centennial within the theme of their annual fashion show that they have every year. In partnership with the Palm Beaches, that is our tourism partner, they did a few activations at the various Brightline stations, one being a selfie station at the Boca Raton Brightline Station, and then that really massive wrap at the Miami Station to promote the centennial. Prosperity Brewers, they went ahead and put together our 1925 Centennial Ale Brew. If you haven't tasted it, it's delicious. It's a pineapple-infused ale paying homage to the pineapple farms that were very prevalent within the city. They could be found at 60 different locations throughout the city, from Whole Foods and Trader Joe's to the various restaurants in our downtown. And we also partnered with James Hardy Pro Football Hall of Fame for a few activations. And coming soon, we have a lot of really exciting initiatives and partnerships coming up with FAU and Boca Bowl.
So you may have seen, this is a current initiative with another wonderful partner we have, with the Flamingo House Downtown, and these are two centennial interns representing FAU and Lynn University. We have Asia and Delaney, and the, basically, it's just a fun thing that we have 100 flamingos, and they're showing up at a different historic and significant locations throughout the city. And we encourage everybody to go follow the flock, and go take a picture, and tag us, and the Flamingo House.
And again, we really wanted to make this a citywide, community-wide program for the centennial. So we've been reaching out, well, our interns have been reaching out to all the various businesses, small businesses, local restaurants within the city to incentivize them to participate within the centennial. So right now, these are a few of the promotions that we have going on with some small businesses and local restaurants. We also have our hotel package with six local hotels, that if you give a specific code, they have some fun promotion. So a very big thank you for all of our community partners and local businesses who have been participating in this program. And lastly, we've incorporated the centennial in every way possible that we can, especially with staff too, and throughout branded fleet decals, our downtown street markers. The police department put together a beautiful centennial squad car, and we have a few upcoming initiatives, which includes a centennial tree grove, which is 100 trees that are planted across the city, and we're also working on a tree dedication program that hopefully we'll be able to launch in the fall. We are also creating a centennial time capsule, which will be presented at the October 25th free concert, and it will be displayed at Spanish River Library, and then eventually moved to City Hall. And then the city entryway signs, those are the Welcome to City of Boca Raton signs. Designs for that are under review and underway, and we'll provide an update as we get closer on installation. And that is all we have. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any questions?
Not a question, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a question. I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you've put into this. I have been to all the centennial events so far, and have loved all of them. I think it's bringing the community together and instilling a lot of community pride, which I love. Plus, they've been really, really fun. So, thank you. I am really loving the Boca Raton Untold videos, especially the one featuring our own Deputy City Manager, Mr. Camacho. They're really informative, they're really fun to watch, and just love hearing that history all over. So thank you for working so hard.
Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would echo that and say that the programming that you all have put together has been so well-received that I'm still getting positive feedback from it, even months later. Just as recently as last week, I was speaking to a guy who doesn't even live in Boca, who came to the Weezer concert and was blown away by how fantastic of a program it was, how much of a community he could feel here in the city thanks to the hard work. And this is months after the event had happened. So I want to make sure you all hear that and know that we're very, very proud of the work you all are doing. Thank you.
Ms. Drucker?
Diddle to all of it. I think the programming has been spectacular. I personally enjoyed Boca Fest a lot. I thought that was a great community event that we could carry over into 101 years, and then, and then moving forward, obviously, closing some of our streets and making it really activated. I'm looking forward to Recreation and what they're going to provide as input to the Wildflower Park. As you know, I've been a proponent to activate parks. I just got back from New York City over the weekend, and I was surprised at every corner that I came out of the subway, there are all these new parks that weren't there. I haven't been in the city in a couple of years, and there's all these new parks that they've created. And I took, again, many pictures that I'll share later, just like people walking, and special little dog parks, and Papa Places, and just really fun things that I hadn't seen in the city, since I hadn't been there in a while. So thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Any further comments?
I think Mr. Wigder echoes that, and I do too. And we are looking forward to activation of parks. This is something we talked about too. I think we can have a lot of fun events at Wildflower, and other, other parks, as we've done, and part of the centennial theme. So thank you, and thank you to the sponsors out there, and the future sponsors will help sponsor great things in our city.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. That concludes our presentation. So turn to board interviews. Do we have any applicants here for the Historic Preservation Board? Welcome, please come forward, give your name and address, and you have up to three minutes to tell us why you want to serve.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Tryer. I live at 2600 South Ocean Boulevard. I'm a registered architect in Florida now for nearly 30 years, and a member of the AIA. My past experience includes doing, working on the master plan for a little development in Manhattan called Battery Park City, which won numerous AIA awards. I've also worked on the preservation of one of the dormitories that was historically designated at Harvard University, Matthews Hall, which is right on the main quadrangle there as well. I've also was involved in the preservation of a castle in New York that's also on the National Register called Castle Rock, which is in, right across the Hudson River from West Point. As a, I've been working in Boca Raton for 30 years. I am a past resident of North Palm Beach, where I served on the planning board there for eight years, involved in its whole master planning and reworking of its master plan there as well. The reason why I'd like to serve in Boca Raton is, I'm a big believer in community service. Boca Raton is a wonderful, wonderful town. The little bit of history that it has, even though it's 100 years old, the little bit of its built history needs to be, attention needs to be paid to it, and use it as a foundation for the further growth that is inevitable in this community. My involvement in planning outside of just being an architect has always been involved in allowing sites to go to their highest and best use. Sometimes that's economic opportunity, sometimes that's cultural, sometimes it's just listening to what the community wants. And the experience that I have on boards, knowing that there's small issues and large issues, I have the patience to deal with those kinds of matters. If there's any questions, I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you for your application. Councilmembers, any questions? All right, thank you. We will make the appointments tomorrow night. You do not need to attend tomorrow night to be considered. Thank you. Anyone else for Historic Preservation Board? Mr. President, we received an application from you for this board?
Yeah, I applied in early June. I was not selected at that time, but given that there's a vacancy, I'd like to, I'd like to have that application reviewed again, and I'd like to have the three minutes to speak about it.
Sure, we'll let you speak today, and you, we'll just have to, we'll have the clerk follow up with you about the correct submission. Please go ahead.
John Pearlman, 498 Northeast A Street. In early June, there was an opening for the Historic Preservation Board, and I did apply at that time. Unfortunately, I was not selected. It's come to my attention now there's an opening, and I'd like to be reconsidered. If I were elected to the Historic Preservation Board, I would be, number one, I would work to preserve Memorial Park from its impending destruction if the government redevelopment campus were to be passed through in the October vote. There's been discussion that, in the 1947 minutes of the Town Council, the Town Council dedicated Memorial Park to World War II by naming the area within as quote "Memorial Park" and as quote "War Memorial." We've reviewed the minutes, as have other specialists, and we're certain that Memorial Park is a Memorial Park dedicated to World War II, even though the city of Boca currently denies that. And if I were selected to the board, I would, I would, my first matter of business would be to protect the Memorial Park. Secondly, as part of the government campus redevelopment project, there's an intention to relocate the Children's Museum of Boca Raton, which is the second oldest building in Boca that still exists. With a, with a, and that's, that's a very important landmark, a historic landmark in the city. Mr. Singer mentioned that it had been moved once. Every time you move a building like that, and it's set to be moved as a result of the proposed government redevelopment campus, every time you move a building like that, it risks damage to that building. It might have been successful the first time, but the second go-around, we might not be lucky. As, if I were elected to the Historic Preservation Board, I would not risk damage in moving that from its current site to that historic building that's so important to our city. Lastly, I would work to preserve the Tim Huxholt Skate Park, which was named after the 1999 Parks and Recreation Board Chairman, who spent his career working to provide quality park facilities and recreation programs for all residents and visitors of Boca Raton. Destroying that park, which is a plan as part of the proposed government redevelopment campus, would put, put Tim Huxholt's legacy in jeopardy. And given that he was such an influential member of the city of Boca Raton, and he spent his career serving the city of Boca Raton, and there's a plaque outside the skate park, naming it after him as a historic member of our society, I would preserve that as well. So please consider me for the Historic Preservation Board. Thank you.
Any other applicants who've submitted an application? All right, we will make the appointments tomorrow night. We'll turn now to the Permitting and Construction Review Board, and we are very pleased to have an applicant at long last. Would you come forward, We've been looking for a structural engineer, and I believe we found one. Please give us your name and address, and tell us why you'd like to serve.
Afternoon. Michael Reamer. While I am not a resident of Boca Raton, I live at 5270 River Mill Lane in Lake Worth. However, Boca Raton's very important to me. Having two sets of grandparents that still reside in Boca Raton, and having grown up around this area, visiting their houses many times in my life, it holds a certain place in my heart, and I feel that serving on a board like this would give me a way to give back to a community that's given so much to me in my life. I'm also a proud graduate of Florida Atlantic University, and a licensed structural engineer in Florida for the last 12 years now. I've been practicing in the field for probably around 20 years or so. Done various projects around the state of Florida, as well as outside of the state of Florida, but also very familiar with the Florida Building Code, local adjustments to the Florida Building Code, and sit on, currently sit on the American Society of Civil Engineers Windload Subcommittee for developing the next ASE7 code, which will be implemented in the Florida Building Code in the future. If I was to be appointed to this board, I would, you know, like I said, look forward to giving back to the community and giving back in a way that I feel, you know, is in need. Structural engineers are not necessarily in abundance these days, so I am here to help and help out any way possible. So I also currently sit on the Palm Beach County Construction Board of Appeals and Adjustments, just again, another way that I found that taking minimal time out of my day to help out where needed. Also, a structure specialist for the Florida Task Force Two Urban Search and Rescue Team, another way that I could use my knowledge and talents to help people in need. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's a little bit about me. So, like I said, although not a resident of Boca Raton, I am, I am here all the time. I am always down in Boca Raton and have been in Boca Raton my whole life, so.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Again, we'll make the appointments tomorrow night. You do not need to attend tomorrow night to be considered.
Thank you.
And we'll turn to the Sustainability Advisory Board. Is the applicant here? All right, that concludes our board interviews for today. We'll open the floor to public requests. I will note that we will have public comment, as we have at 20-plus meetings now, on the government campus partnership opportunities. So if you wish to speak on that, hold your comments, please, until the public comment section of that. Anyone wishing to speak, public request? All right, we'll move to a review of regular agenda items. Councilmembers, any questions concerning tomorrow night's agenda that you wish to raise now? Seeing none, we'll take up any items then tomorrow night. We'll now turn to items of council and public concern, and as always, we have our redevelopment partnership opportunity for our government campus. I'll turn to Mr. Brown first.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lukasik is going to make an update and share the podium with Rob Frisbee of Frisbee Group to provide us that campus update today.
Thank you. Ms. Lukasik, Mr. Frisbee?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Andy Lukasik, your Deputy City Manager. Can you hear me? Okay, I just want to make sure. And obviously, Rob Frisbee, Principal with Frisbee Group and the Terriffrisbee Group.
Mr. Lukasik, maybe just a little closer. I sound louder than you do.
Okay, very good. Yeah, it sounded, I'll just scoot myself up. Is that better? I'll lean in a bit. Okay. Rob and I are here today to give you an update on where we stand with the project. You know, there's a lot, a lot of detail that we're still working on, but we wanted to give you, you know, a quick summary on some of the highlights, and talk a little bit about how we got here. So I'm going to go ahead and kick things off and talk a little bit about how we got here, why, why are we looking at this project today? Why is it important today? You receive lots of questions. We want to try to talk about that a little bit. Actually, Councilmember Wigder, as he was in his role as Chair of the CRA a little while ago in the previous meeting, did a really nice job of starting to address some of the reasons behind, well, why? Why are we starting to talk about this particular project? And, and the reason that we're starting to talk about this project are those opportunities that are out there for the community. Council has identified a number of opportunities and challenges that the city is going to face in the not-too-distant future, and really started thinking about, well, how do we start addressing those issues now? What sort of things do we do to make sure that the city is prepared to take advantage of those opportunities or challenges as they're, as they're approaching us? A couple, a couple of things that Councilmember Wigder talked about, you know, was Brightline. You know, Brightline was a really nice opportunity to expose people to the downtown, give our residents an opportunity to have mobility up and down the coast. That, that created a nice opportunity to start thinking about, well, how do we reprogram some of downtown? The pending expiration of the D- The pending expiration of the DRI, Councilmember Wigder, again, talked a little bit about, hey, the DRI language is going to lapse. We need a new regulatory framework in order to address that issue downtown. What is downtown going to look like going forward? And the sunset of the CRA. CRA going to be sunsetting, so what sort of things do we do to replace that revenue stream from CRA? And last but not least, aging infrastructure and facilities that have extended beyond their useful life. Lots of challenges with infrastructure, not necessarily meeting our day-to-day needs. We have a couple of municipal facilities that we'll talk about in a little more depth that have kind of outgrown their useful life. Staff is using City Hall that, you know, isn't that friendly to staff. It's not very accommodating to a modern workforce, not very friendly to serving our citizens, as well as the community center, probably more importantly, the community center, the place where all that civic activity, all of the community gathering should be happening in a structure that built in the mid-'60s. Seen better days. Needs a refresh. So, all of these opportunities and challenges that faced us, faced you in your policy role, and what you started thinking about involved the government campus and how you can turn the government campus into a way to capitalize on these opportunities and these challenges going forward. One of the things I wanted, a couple of things I want to hit on. So, first of all, let's talk a little bit about the connection to downtown. Lots of discussion and strategic planning sessions about connecting to downtown, enhancing the vibrancy of downtown, having areas that the community as a whole will want to gather. As Mr. Brown has said on a couple of occasions, you know, we need to develop a place where people just want to go and be, regardless really of what uses are there, but it's a place that's interesting and where people want to go. So, you've talked about that on a number of occasions. That spun into the conversations about transit-oriented communities and the 15-minute city concept, making sure that you have a mix of uses that are able to generate interest, capture internal traffic, so having that appropriate mix of uses so that there's a good mix of, a good ability to capture people from, not necessarily getting in their cars, but be able to walk, use bicycles to travel around, use other modes of transportation. So, this, the project that we're starting to talk about hones in on those particular opportunities. So, as Mr. Frisby will talk about, a pretty significant mixed-use plan, a well-balanced mixed-use plan, and one I think will meet the objectives that you've talked about in the past. We've also talked about safe streets. It kind of goes hand-in-hand with your conversation about transit-oriented communities and 15-minute cities, because they really need to be walkable. They need to be a place where people feel safe, where they feel comfortable, where they don't feel as though they need to get into a car in order to get the services or do the shopping that they need, or go to work. So, you've talked a lot about Vision Zero in the past. You've talked about complete streets. Vision Zero being the effort to make sure that there are no deaths as a result of crashes, no serious injuries as a result of crashes. Complete streets that really promote multimodal opportunities to move around the community. This particular project gives us that opportunity to demonstrate what could be done within the community. Again, Councilmember Wigder, in his comments as the Chair of the CRA a few minutes ago, talked about the ability to start demonstrating and informing what happens in the rest of downtown with the expiration of the DRI. And the government campus is a really good opportunity to be able to do that. Mr. Frisby and his team have been working on designs that start to address those issues. So, you'll, I'll talk about it in more detail, but you'll see that the Terra Frisby team has developed a network of streets, so we're starting to enhance the connectivity throughout the government campus, so an extension of Third Street and a connection of First Street, as well as extending Second to Crawford. So, you've got this nice network of streets within the government campus. You've got on-street parking to create a little bit of friction to make sure that cars are traveling at an appropriate speed, given the activity that we'll have downtown, as well as a very robust landscaping plan that'll, one, not only create a very impressive aesthetic throughout the downtown, but also create shade and that comfort that residents need or visitors need as they're walking around the campus. As I talked about early on, one of the opportunities and challenges that you identified early on was the need to address what's happening with the community center and City Hall. So, again, both 1960 vintage buildings, both beyond their useful life. You all have visited City Hall and the community center on multiple occasions. You've seen the challenges we have from a maintenance perspective, the conditions of the facilities. So, the project gives us this really unique opportunity to be able to partner with Terra Frisby to not only start to address the condition of those facilities, restore them, bring them up to modern standards, but do in a way that provides for some prudent fiscal strategies. So, we'll talk a little bit about some of the revenue, the revenue streams that are generated by the project, but this partnership gives us that ability to address those issues that are confronting us in a very fiscally responsible way. The other challenge, or the other opportunity that we have with the Terra Frisby Plan is the ability to start addressing recreation in a different way. Lots of opportunities onsite with the plan that the Terra Frisby Group has proposed. There are a number of different parks in the project as proposed. What is the focus of this particular image that you're looking at now is the Civic Heart area between the community center, which would be located on the left side of the image, and the City Hall. That green space is a wide-open space, able to be programmed, mostly for community gatherings and community functions. And I should say that that's going to be really important as it relates to starting to program the community center as well. Community center is going to be incredibly important to get that civic vibrancy that you have been talking about in the past, create opportunities for community groups to meet, clubs to meet, just the opportunities for social gatherings for the community and the like. But that ties in really well with the green space that the Terra Frisby Group has envisioned in their plan. You'll see safer, more modern playgrounds, one in particular on the southwest corner of the project, updated basketball and tennis courts. Basketball will be directly tied to the community center, and I'll talk a little bit about the tennis courts later. And the opportunity underground and relocate power lines to create a friendlier downtown. So, right now, we have transmission lines that run kind of parallel to Second at this point, trying to relocate those so Second Street has a cleaner look, and there's a better ability to use the green space will be really important as we're going forward. And this just gives an image of the before and after. So, the before image on the left-hand side, where you can just see the softball fields highlighted in green, tennis courts highlighted in green, and vis-à-vis the image of the green space and the civic heart of the plan. An interesting thing about the programming or the design of the green space in the Terra Frisby Plan is the highly accessible nature of it. So, you'll see lots of on-street parking. You'll see lots of connectivity for pedestrians and bicyclists, very exposed to the public in general. So, lots of ability to get access to the site. Also, some renderings of what could be for some of the playground areas and what the community center could look like. So, the rendering on the top right-hand corner of the slide shows the playground in the southwest corner of the project area. Now, that basketball court is going to be actually relocated closer to the community center, but that gives you some understanding as to what the vision is by Terra Frisby related to the playground. And then on the bottom right-hand corner is an image that you've seen before. This is the image of the community center and what some of the recreational facilities could look like. One thing that I want to mention that I touched on briefly is the financial benefit of this program. Now, it hasn't necessarily been the driver for your strategic discussions on redeveloping the government campus, but it's an important component to talk about and just comment on. Where, just like a number of other Florida communities, we have some challenges in front of us. In our particular case, we have some of the aging infrastructure that we talked about. We have some of the mobility demands that we've been talking about. You know, we get lots of comments, you hear lots of comments from residents downtown about the need to enhance mobility and their ability to get around the downtown area, lots of issues about speeding throughout the city. So, there are some mobility challenges that we have. There are the challenges we have with the current community center and City Hall. We also have challenges with the sunsetting of the CRA. Again, Chairman Wigder talked a little bit about what the impact of that sunsetting is going to have on the community, as well as the fact that there is discussion about state legislation that could erode the ability of property taxes to fund our day-to-day operations. So, all of those things make it really important to think about what, how we're going to handle finances going forward. And the master partnership agreement that we'll have with the Terra Frisby Group will help us address that. It'll have a series of revenue streams, diverse revenue streams, that'll help us navigate some of those challenges. So, we'll have enhanced property tax revenue. We'll have ground lease revenue that we'll be able to deploy, and there'll also be some shared revenue from the profits received from the overall project. So, those pieces are still in negotiation with the master partnership agreement. I think it's really important to talk about those because they really help us fund a lot of these needs that we have and really put us in a better financial position going forward, because we'll have that diverse revenue stream, and we're not relying solely on property taxes anymore. That sort of lends itself to some of these off-site improvements. So, obviously, we have some recreational opportunities on the site today, and in order to have achieved that vibrant development that we've talked about over the course of the past couple of years, you know, it's necessary to relocate and enhance some of those facilities. So, this is an image of the new tennis facility that we're proposing at Meadows Park. Ten clay courts, new tennis center. I should mention that the Singing Pines Historical Building is located onsite, so intended to be relocated to Meadows Park, and really programmed for, well, one, activated, and two, programmed for a historical perspective. So, we want to make sure that we make better use of that building than it currently is because right now it's sitting there and it's not getting any use. So, it could be activated and put to much better use if we move it to Meadows Park. Next, I wanted to touch on Sugar Sand Park. So, we have two softball fields at City Hall, or at the City Hall location. We'll relocate those two, also relocate one that's currently at Meadows Park and add an additional. What's unique about this is that, you know, not only can we move these facilities into a quad where they can all be kind of managed together, we've been asked by the parents and the members of youth softball groups to really think about providing some equity related to the facilities that softball uses relative to baseball. So, this will give us the opportunity to provide concessions, restrooms, scoreboards, batting cage facilities, bleachers, shade, the like. So, really provide them with the same facilities that baseball currently has, and do it in a, whoops, sorry, and really do it in a cost-effective manner. Then last, I wanted to touch on the skate park and pump track. So, the city is partnering with the Beach and Park District on the relocation of the skate park. So, 55,000 to 60,000 square foot skate park, much more modern, state-of-the-art. You know, ours, quite frankly, is a bit tired. I know it's got some history to it, but it is a bit tired and needs some life breathed into it. So, this partnership with the Beach and Park District will allow us to get there and combine it with that pump track, which admittedly, until the Beach and Park District had talked about it, I was unaware of what pump tracks were. So, really nice opportunity for us to make that investment in the community and enhance all of these facilities that are being relocated. So, it gave us a real good opportunity to be able to do that. And one thing I failed to mention on, when I was talking about softball, is that to try to provide those equitable facilities, the room at City Hall is just not there. So, there's not enough space to be able to really do that in a cost-effective way. So, it's about a 12 to 13-acre endeavor to try to accommodate all softball. So, trying to do that and continue to have the vibrant type of development that you've been talking about over the course of the past few years just really isn't feasible. So, all of these relocations give us an interesting opportunity to enhance the quality of those deliveries going forward. I want to go back, whoops, sorry, I don't use this enough to, there we go. I wanted to go back to this slide real quick. I talked a little bit about the grid that is being presented by Terra Frisby, but it's also, I went through a lot about those off-site improvements and how we're going to address recreation going forward in terms of those enhancements, but I also think it's important to mention the mobility aspect of the project. So, the focus is on how do we move people, cyclists, and even cars safely through this area of town? And how can this be used as a means to demonstrate how we can do that and deploy strategies elsewhere within the community, especially downtown? So, you'll see, and difficult in this particular rendering, but relatively narrow streets, lots of landscaping. So, you'll have wider sidewalks, lots of landscaping, protected bike lanes, all to try to make sure that walking and mobility through the corridor and through this area is safer. Couple of features to point out on Second Avenue in particular, because staff and the Terra Frisby team has spent a good deal of time talking about how to encourage mobility on Second Avenue. To the, there we go, to the north end of the project area is a traffic circle. So, we know that that can be a challenging intersection to navigate, so this circle should be able to slow traffic down, but be able to have traffic flow freely through that particular intersection. This intersection at Third is essentially an intersection with a peanut, so allows traffic to turn in left, allows traffic to turn out right, but prevents a lot of movement through the intersection, make sure that it continues to be safe. Second Avenue is a protected intersection, so giving lots of preferential treatment to bicyclists. to bicyclists and pedestrians. And then the extended First Avenue is essentially a right-in, right-out because of some of the queuing nature that you'll see at the intersection of Palmetto and Second. And one thing to mention is that in the programming for Second Avenue, because of the inequitable distribution of traffic, meaning the, in this particular case, meaning that the southbound traffic is significantly more than the northbound traffic, in order to create the environment that we've been talking about on the campus area, we're recommending eliminating a northbound, one of the northbound lanes, so the roadway can be narrowed and we can get that retail, that type of civic, engaged feel that we've been talking about, especially since that's an incredibly important place for retail as part of the project. So I wanted to let you know that that was a concept that we were working with and we're incorporating that into our designs at this point. Rob, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you to start talking about a couple of things.
Thank you. There's two remaining slides in this presentation that I want to go over to highlight the positive financial implications of how the downtown campus plan, which as we heard in public comment from Mr. Tucker, will be vital to the future success of the city. Working with CBRE, we have projected that the new campus plan will generate over $3 billion in revenue for the city over the course of the 99-year lease term. That equates to between $330 to $350 million in net present value to the city. While the revenue generation from the plan is substantial, it's more impressive that it's generated from a right-sized project, one that was substantially smaller in density and height than any other submission during the RFP process. Yet, on a per-density basis, it provides the highest lease payments to the city, ensuring that the community will receive both significant financial resources and a right-sized project that is in keeping with the current identity of the city. Now, on the cost side of the ledger, we conducted underground utility surveys and studied the ASB builds to gain an understanding of the existing infrastructure on-site. As you might expect, a lot of it is dated, built between the 1960s with some going all the way back to the 40s. And from these studies, we have prepared a new infrastructure plan, including updates to the water lines, sewage, drainage, and roadways. And based on what we believe the future requirements will be and the resulting infrastructure plan, we have gone out and had two GCs bid the infrastructure. We are continuing to refine those bids, as it is obviously a granular and complex process, but the bottom line is that these necessary infrastructure upgrades and civic building improvements can be paid for entirely from the proposed downtown campus, as initial estimates are substantially less than the net present value of the downtown campus revenue streams. Now, we will refine these numbers further and present them again in greater detail in September and October, but we are proud to highlight how the positive impacts of the new campus plan extend further than physical improvements and also provide significant financial resources for the city going forward. And I'll end on this last slide with a quote, and this is an image of the, a rendering of the proposed new City Hall showing the wide sidewalks, the enlarged crosswalk for pedestrians, the wider medians. You can even see in the bottom right-hand corner, the protected bike lane and this new activated public realm. And this is not a giveaway, but a return. The city gains billions in financial return, avoids raising taxes, and secures modern civic infrastructure at no cost to residents.
A couple of things to wrap up. I was remiss in not mentioning a couple of other mobility investments that we're exploring as part of the project. One includes the inclusion of a connection on Crawford. So on Crawford, the Terran Frisbee Group is working to include a dedicated lane that will address e-bikes and scooters, those types of micro-mobility-type opportunities. So they're working to incorporate that into some of their cross-sections. That connection will also be made to Palmetto Park Road. So the intent is to make sure that Crawford has a really good connection to that northern pedestrian and bike facility on Palmetto Park Road. We're also looking at, as part of our off-site improvements, what we can do to improve multimodal opportunities on the south side of Palmetto, so even going all the way to 12th. So we're looking at how do we make sure that we can get neighbors, encourage them to be able to get to the downtown area using those types of facilities on Palmetto as opposed to hopping in a car. Also, Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth, so that northwest, north-south corridor, is going to be really important. We're looking at some capacity, some potential capacity improvements where it's possible, but mostly looking at multimodal opportunities as well. So we know that trying to enhance capacity in a residential neighborhood is pretty difficult. So we want to make sure that we're at least addressing some of the needs and hitting those multimodal opportunities where we can. So we are working on that particular corridor as the same time that we're thinking about some of these other off-site mobility improvements. It's also important to mention that in addition to Jeff Speck coming to visit with us, we do have Kim Lee Horn working with us, and they're working on that east-west connector feasibility study. So that has gotten underway and that work is happening at the same time. All of which, when we start developing solutions, will be helped with the enhanced revenue stream, new revenue stream that we'll see from the downtown campus project. In terms of fully wrapping up, we're working with the Terran Frisbee Group to finalize their due diligence period today, actually. They have a number of questions that staff has posed to them. They're responding to those questions to try to fill out the requirements for a complete master plan application. So that, we at a staff level are receiving that information today and will be working to get a response back to Terran Frisbee quickly, largely because, you know, we have a schedule that is leading us to try to finalize a master plan and a master partnership agreement by October 28th. Between now and then, we do plan on having one open house. So we do plan on having an open house in September. So we'll be announcing when that happens soon. We have a lot of work to do to finalize the master plan and the business terms and the master partnership agreement. So between now and the time that you see that agreement, we'll be working to finalize those details. Should be important to note that Planning and Zoning Board will actually see the master plan, see master plan draft, excuse me, see the master plan submittal on September 24th. And we anticipate that the council will have a first reading on October 14th and a second reading on October 28th. And at that meeting on October 28th, you'll consider approving the master plan, a series of lane development regulations that'll help inform not only this particular area in the downtown, but also start setting the framework for development going forward in the entire downtown, as well as a master partnership agreement. That's all that Rob and I have for you this afternoon. We're happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Before any questions, Mr. Brown, did you have any more to add? I think you had some on the history there, but we can do that today or we can do that later. I could pause for questions first. Questions?
I have something that I'd like to bring up. Thank you both for the presentation. And as expected, when we entered into the interim agreement and the interim master plan and approved that to go forward, we knew that this would be evolving, and it's going to still keep evolving until we hopefully can get through this process and reach an agreement, you know? So one of the things I wanted to bring up, which I've brought up from the beginning, is, and if you can go back to the slide that has the image of the downtown with the open rec space? Right there, right there. So right now, what is being proposed is 10 tennis courts out at Meadows and two in the downtown, yet we are potentially adding hundreds of residential units to the downtown. And I would like to see, I don't play tennis, but I've been advocating for it, I would like to see more tennis courts in the downtown. I would like to see six tennis courts in the downtown in addition to the 10 that we're putting out at Meadows. I think that going forward, our city is going to need more recreation. I like the open green space. I like that there's a field at the eastern side of it. I think we need that for sure, but I think that we need these tennis courts in the downtown. They've been in the downtown since the 60s. There's a lot of people who play tennis, and that is a recreation in the downtown. So I'd like to know what the appetite is from the rest of council to do that, and if that is something that you could support or talk about. Again, we're evolving this plan as we keep moving forward, and we keep saying how we're enhancing and making better what we currently have. We currently have 10 courts. If we're just talking about, you know, adding the two hard courts when we're adding potentially a lot more residential to the downtown, I think that we should have more than two in the downtown. And that's what I wanted to bring up today. I wanted to thank you for providing more financial information, and I'm sure more will be forthcoming. And also, you briefly touched on it, but preserving the banyan trees was something that we also spoke about that is going to be done. Someone yesterday said to me that they heard, and again, there's information out there that is circulating around that may not be totally accurate, someone heard that Second Street was going to be, was going to be closed off at the railroad tracks, and I assured them that that was not in the plan. So you showed here that Third Street goes all the way through, Second Street goes all the way through, and First Street, the playground is kind of in the center of it, but it goes all the way through on one side and then partially to Crawford on the other side. So I just wanted to bring those things up. I know Mr. Brown is going to bring up some information, too, but I would like to have that discussion about the tennis courts in the downtown.
Are there comments? Mr. Wiger?
You know I'm a tennis player. I'm always in favor of playing tennis. It's important as we age, and my orthopedist tells me that clay is the way. Clay is the way to keep us, you know, from getting really hurt and still playing tennis. So I certainly can appreciate that if we want to do tennis, it's got to be clay courts. I think I've said once in the past that just from playing in leagues throughout my life or whatever, I've been lucky enough to go to the Boca Raton Resort once, and that the resort has, I believe it's 27 courts, all on the roof of their parking garage downtown. So, you know, the idea here is we do have an opportunity, if we plan this right, and, like I said before, you know, these, again, although we're really getting a little bit more detailed in our due diligence about, you know, the concepts here, from an architectural standpoint and a programming standpoint, we're still in the concept phases here, right? So we're still working to plan these things out, and we're not really even deep into architecture here yet. So we have an opportunity to do something, you know, creative and innovative where we can have a community center with potentially indoor rec, indoor basketball, or flex courts like Sugar Sand, like Sugar Sand Park has that flex fieldhouse, and potentially an opportunity to have clay courts on top. And there's an opportunity there, if the structure is built correctly, where we could do that, or it could be, you know, an open space underneath or parking underneath, and we can still have festivals there. So Ms. Nakle, I don't disagree. Obviously, from my understanding, you know, the number six in terms of courts is important for league play, and if we do have all these residents going here, to say that Boca Raton is well-known, is world-class for tennis, and obviously putting a world-class facility in our new world-class, you know, downtown area, I could certainly appreciate that and absolutely consider it if it could be worked architecturally into it. I could certainly consider that. This weekend, I was fortunate enough to attend with a couple other council members the Boca Raton Basketball League's inaugural jamboree at the Sugar Sand Park, which was wonderful because it was like hundreds of kids on two courts, the two basketball courts. And of course, as this jamboree was going on, it started raining. And as we know, it's Florida, it's, you know, and so, you know, an opportunity to create another way to have indoor recreation. Maybe we could do it in the North Park, but of course, that's in a different location. But to have indoor recreation here as well, and tennis courts as well, I think that's a great future that we could plan. And again, we're just in due diligence here. We're not in architectural planning. So certainly, I could appreciate that, and if we could work it into the plan, you know, I'd be in favor of it.
There's a lot of talk about tennis, and there's an important part of the conversation, it's about the entirety of the conversation. I did have some questions about what has evolved in the plan itself, because I'm not sure, this is my first time seeing some of the rendering, some of the changes, like this one here. Could somebody explain what the major evolutions have been? Because I think members of the public would want to know that.
I'm just going to use this image because I think it's pretty comprehensive. Okay, so, and some of these updates, we had shared previously, some of them have happened more recently in the last few weeks. The main update that you saw in that rendering was really around recreation and maintaining more recreation on-site instead of these passive green spaces that are beautiful, but they don't function for as many different or multi-use events. And so what we've done is created in between the community center on, that bookends on the west side along Crawford and the City Hall, creating one large, this doesn't seem to be working, but one large green space that becomes multifunctional. So that green space could be used for after-school activities, it could be used for sports, it could be used to host a farmer's market or a classic car show. In addition to that, we've taken the entire southwest corner of the project, the green space in that bottom-left corner, and we've dedicated that to really be, oh, thank you. And we've dedicated that entire green space to really be dedicated to young families and children and to have an expanded children's playground. Today, if you look at the current children's playground, it sits actually right underneath transmission lines. It's one of those areas that could be really focused on and improved. And so our goal is to create this world-class, the best children's playground in the city, right here in the southwest corner, in addition to this amazing, large, multifunctional green space in the civic core. In addition to that, we're moving the outdoor basketball court, where we're proposing to shift it to the north and have it become adjacent to the new community center. And by doing that, it's now adjacent to the indoor gymnasium, so the indoor basketball and the outdoor basketball. And we also have the ability more easily to provide shade or to have it covered, so that if it is raining, it wouldn't be an air-conditioned space, but it would be a covered space. Then in terms of mobility, one of the big changes that we've created is really focusing on safety. And I would say, in addition to preserving the public realm, enhancing the public realm, safety was one of the biggest pieces of feedback that we've received throughout all of the community engagement sessions. In particular, this feeling that crossing Second Avenue is, that the traffic is way too fast and it's too dangerous. And so what we've worked hard to do, as Andy pointed out, we've reduced the lanes to 10 feet for all of the vehicular lanes. We've added much wider the, the lanes to 10 feet for all of the vehicular lanes, we've added much wider sidewalks, all of the sidewalks are shaded, we've added dedicated bike lanes that are protected from cars, and then along Crawford, we've added a mobility corridor that has what, what we're calling is a, a light electric vehicle lane, and that's for really electric, electric bikes or scooters, you know, personal mobility that goes a little bit faster than just walking or biking, so you could come north-south along Crawford on those protected, dedicated lanes, and then you can cross to the east into the Bright Line Station. So, just trying to think through how pedestrians are moving, how bicyclists are moving, but then how people on scooters and electric bikes are, are moving as well. So, it's been that mobility component, it's been the recreational component, and I think, too, the, the comments about tennis, we absolutely can address those, and we could do that and present it in September with a, a plan that shows how to incorporate six tennis courts into the downtown, and I think with the goal right now that we want to, we want to improve upon all of the existing recreation, I think, and, and we're doing so, I believe, with the skate, the new skate park that would be just worlds better than, than the one that exists, obviously with the, the softball by adding an additional, an additional field, we're, we'd be doing it with the basketball by creating indoor and outdoor basketball that both could be covered, we'd be doing it with the children's playground by removing it, number one, from being underneath those transmission lines, but then creating it in a much larger setting with just incredible equipment, and then to, to focus on tennis as well, to be able to provide a dedicated new tennis center in Meadows Park, the ten courts, but then also to have six courts downtown, that would, would really be amazing. So, that's something that we can definitely study and, and look at for, for September.
Does that more or less identify all of the evolutions that have happened since the interim master plan?
Yes, that does.
Okay. May I continue, Mayor? I noticed in one of the slides, there was a reference to, for the off-site recreation, you just mentioned this a moment ago, Rob, that the financial revenues to the city would be such that they would reimburse the city for the off-site recreation, that is still the plan, that, that we would be paying for them out of pocket at the outset?
Yes.
Okay, so, how long would it take to do that, by your estimate?
So, there's a couple things that we're studying right now, and of course, as I mentioned earlier, there's in excess of $3 billion in, in revenue that's coming to the city over the 99-year term of the lease, and we're, we're projecting that that's around $330 to $350 million of net present value. And so, there's ways where the city doesn't have to come out of pocket for, for the infrastructure, for these improvements, where they can be funded through other means that would take on debt and loans, that would be repaid through, through that, the $3 billion of, of revenue. So, that's something that we need to spend, you know, more time that we're working on right now. What we've been really focused on has been the infrastructure for onsite, and that includes the infrastructure for the, the public roads and parks, but also for the, the new civic buildings, so the City Hall, the community center. We have not focused as much on the cost for the off-site facilities, it's just, again, high level, when you think about the, you have a $330 to $350 million net present value, and over $3 billion of revenues coming to the city, and those can be used to fund, you know, what, it's really up to the city how they want to choose to use those funds.
Thank you for that. You had made reference a moment ago to the cost of the infrastructure and for the city buildings themselves, is it still the plan for the city to pay for those at the outset?
So, there is a, an interim period that would be cash flow negative, it's, it's several years, and during that period, again, the city does not have to come out of pocket for that. We presented at the end of last week to city staff solutions that would, would allow the city not to have to come out of pocket for that. So, again, it's, it's really up to the city, I think whoever's paying for that, I look at it, it's an investment, there's a return on that investment, so the city might choose if they want to make those upfront investments, because they're getting paid back for doing so, but, but no, the, the, I think that what we're really excited about, what we're really proud about, is the fact that this project has achieved this really great balance, and that balance is around a right-size plan that's really dynamic, that is focused on the central public spaces, the civic core, it's allocating the most valuable real estate within the whole plan for that civic experience, and, and when you just look at this image on, on the screen, you can see that it, it is not a, a scary, super-tall, overly-dense downtown, in fact, the entire Phase 1A, which is the majority of, of the site, that includes the low-scale residential and the civic buildings, that's at that pedestrian scale, that entire phase, and so, the, in, in terms of, of creating that balance, where we're, we're designing and working with the city and with staff and, and the residents to design something that is appropriate for the scale of, of the community, but at the same time, still generates significant revenues, and, and I mentioned, you know, the, the way that that's possible is that during that RFP process, we submitted to pay the most on a per-unit basis of, of any of the other submissions. So, what the city's receiving here is the highest per-unit in lease payments, and then in addition to the, the incredible expansion of the tax base that will be, that will be created by, by the project. So, all of that comes together to be able to fund and support everything that you see on the screen there.
You mentioned a moment ago that for a period of years, that the project would be cash flow negative to the city? How many years would that be?
Yeah, I have to go in and look, I want to say around five years. And, and again, it's, it's a period, obviously, once the, the project is built out, that's when you get the most financial impact, because you've got the critical density, so it's those early years when the project's just being constructed, and you want to start building that city infrastructure right away. I mean, we want to have this, the community center, City Hall, those, the public infrastructure, so that the public is benefiting from those important components right away, and that's the, the part of the project where we need to come up with a, a financing source that is taking advantage of the future cash flows to pay for that upfront period.
And you said several times through the course of the presentation that your estimate is that this project will yield the city $3 billion and has a net present value of $350 million. Who, and maybe this is a question for Andy, but who has vetted and reviewed those projections from the city's perspective?
So, a couple steps that we're taking to evaluate those numbers, so, you know, one, working through our real estate consultant, CBRE, but secondarily, we're working with our financial consultants, PFM, so we're, we're evaluating all the numbers and the assumptions through PFM to make sure that we have a good understanding as to, you know, where we end up from a revenue perspective.
Have those evaluations by CBRE and PFM been completed?
CBRE, yes, PFM, no.
Have you cer-
Well, let me, let me correct that, it's a bit of an ongoing evaluation, so CBRE has done the vast majority of the evaluation that they're going to do, PFM is taking their initial look at it now.
When do we anticipate those evaluations being complete in totality?
We should have PFM within two weeks.
The, the entire, so, PFM is contracted to, with the city to perform both an, an economic study of the overall project and, and the project benefit, as well as a fiscal analysis over specifically the impact on the city's finances. That engagement is supposed to be completed by the end of September, but, you know, I would, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll have that done sooner than that scheduled timeline.
You had mentioned, either it was Andy or Rob, you guys mentioned Jeff Speck, what are his thoughts on the layout of the plan specifically as it relates to parking? Do we know?
Mr. Speck had a initial concern about the volume of on-street parking at one point, but working, working through staff, you know, Terriff Frisbee working through staff, we have identified some means to be able to maintain on-street parking, but reduce the volume, so that we, we can have enough landscaping and enough of an ability to create what we think is the vibrant, the vibrant look that you, you all have been striving for. So, as a foreign sense, they, I forget the name of the, I forget which city it was that I used as a model, South Carolina?
Greenville.
Greenville. So, so as a foreign sense, Greenville was a, was a benchmark community that Terriff Frisbee had used to, to show us, hey, this is, this is what we're thinking about, and this is what we're striving to achieve, and we did take a look at that, that particular community, how they arranged parking and how they managed the look and feel and the protection of pedestrians through spacing their sidewalks, landscaping, what type of landscaping they had. So, that, that actually helped inform some of the comments that we made to Terriff Frisbee in terms of how far, how many parking spaces could be on-street without a landscaping break, what type of space was needed for the appropriate-sized trees so that we get the, the shade and the, the heat reduction that we want, so forth.
Yeah, and to Andy's comments, one of the things that we reacted to, we, because of what Speck and, and the staff had, had come back to on the, on-street parking, we reduced the angle of the angled parking spaces, so that actually reduced the number of parking spaces, not significantly, but it reduced the number of parking spaces, and then we increased the width of the planter beds to provide for larger root balls for trees, so those were, were two things that, that we did to create a, to maintain that, that same environment that we were looking for, where everything is really accessible, and you create this safety for the pedestrian by, by having those cars create a buffer between the streets and, and the sidewalks, but then also making sure that we have that continuous tree canopy, those large shade trees and planter beds that are sufficient to create the greenery that we all want to have here.
I believe that's all the questions I have at the moment, though there may be more later. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Nakle started off some time ago with a question about our feelings on the number of tennis courts, and I appreciate her bringing it up, I appreciate the desire of, I see Ms. Morrow, a dedicated advocate, and thank you for your advocacy. My concern with, and I already know that we're increasing the number of tennis courts by 20% at a minimum, I am concerned, though, I'd be interested to see how that can be explored, because the last time we discussed this several months ago, we landed at realizing that six was too many in the downtown to not take away the, the open green space that serves more people than four tennis players at one time, and I still feel that feeling. I'm looking at this and knowing that, you know, just the general framework here, I don't know where we would fit in two more, let alone four more, north-south courts without dramatically in, reducing the amount of the, that wide green space that is multipurpose and multi, serves many residents all at once. I don't know, Mr. Frisbee, if you have thoughts about that, but my, my point is, I'm not sure six is the right number without a substantial change to other uses that I think benefit a larger number of people.
Yes, I, I think, you know, like everything in life, there, there will be a compromise. I, I don't want to say with, I, I believe in our team and our creativity, so I think if we go back and, and look at this, we'll be able to come back to you in September with some interesting ideas, and then you all can decide if, if any of it's worth pursuing further.
Mayor, sir.
All right, one moment, with that, that would include two, three, four, like, it's not, it's not binary.
Sure, you're right, we can, we'll do a, we'll do several different scenarios, yep.
Very well, Ms. Drucker.
Just a question more for staff, is just, when, when are we supposed to receive the Recreation Master Plan? Because I think that as we continue to, so obviously, there's a lot of focus on the government plan, that's what we're talking about right now, but for us, in order to make better decisions, I would like to see that Recreation Master Plan, to see where else is there tennis, is there going to be more tennis in North Park, is there going to be more tennis on the other side of town, or these other areas? So, it's important for us to have that data in order for us to make these decisions, and just as, I do not play tennis, and I do not play pickleball, and that's not something that I play, but I want the usage that's best for most people based on a project of this caliber, so when you look at these types of projects. So, I like the idea of coming back and having a discussion and being creative, I love the idea of having it, you know, on the part, on the top of the parking garages, I've seen that throughout cities throughout the country, et cetera, et cetera, so I'm not opposed to the idea, I just think in order for me to have a better understanding, I need to understand from our city side, where are we putting these courts besides Meadows Park, where are the other areas that we might have this type of recreation? I think that, that'll give us a more informed decision.
Right.
Mayor, I, I will confirm with staff, but I believe we're going to have an update on the Recreation Master Plan in September, as to where we are with it, but it is still in process, it's being developed, with this being taken into consideration along with the rest of the city.
Thank you. All right, if there are no further questions, then for now, we can, well, Mr. Wiggles, I'm sorry.
Oh, we were just on the tennis discussion, so I didn't, yeah, I didn't bring up other things. No, I'm, I'm appreciative, Rob and Andy, of the big, of the big updates. Obviously, if, if you go to the slide where you have the, where you have the giant field, can, can we go to that? Right there. I see, is, is that, are those soccer lines, project, like, just concept soccer lines that I see on that field?
Yes, this was just a conceptual rendering, but you could theoretically have that be whatever you want, the, the space, I, I think is 300 feet by 200 feet, just to put it in perspective, the, the length of that green space.
Well, that's the size of a football field, but-
Right, it's significant.
I guess this was, I know that in, I guess at DeHornly Park, that for the younger, for the younger folks, they're not playing in super-full-length soccer, they're playing in a modified, a modified size, so you could probably squeeze, is, is it your idea, or is it the designer's idea that we could potentially fit a couple, for, for the smaller-age groups, fit, fit a couple small fields there for?
Absolutely, and, and again, I think it could be multifunctional, so you could have, you could have soccer one day, you could have a, a classic car show another day, you could have a farmer's market, it, it really would be up to the city to how they want to program it.
Like I said before, my understanding is that we're, we are still in the concept phase, and we are looking at all the due diligence items, and Mr. Thompson asked some very good questions about making sure that the financial security of our cities here. I know, obviously, as we talked about in the previous meeting to this one, that the CRAs, tax increment financing is going to be an important part, potentially, of the financing of infrastructure, because even if this project were not here, we would still have to use the tax increment financing to fund the infrastructure, so there, there's a way to do that. Of course, when we're looking at, you know, specific revenue bonds that are tied to this, there's finance, financing mechanisms that I'm sure Mr. Zervis is very familiar with in his previous roles, that we're going to be exploring here, because I think that is the way, at least one way, that we could look at in terms of not up-fronting a lot of money, but financing it. Of course, the question is, you know, the cost of the financing, when we look at the larger pie, if we want to be binary, or very, you know, and just say, well, it has to be this way or this way, that, that's probably not the best way to finance a significant project like this. If we want to look holistically at financing opportunities of the CRA, if it's infrastructure, the TIF, the revenue that this project can generate, revenue bonds tied to this, and, and/or revenue bonds potentially tied to the CRA's tax increment financing, I think we're going to, we're going to be able to explore some ways to, to do that. I don't know, Mr. Frisbee, if you have any comments on those kind of, I know we're a little early in this, or Mr. Zervis, any thoughts on that?
I, well, I, first of all, I agree that we need to come up with a bespoke, tailored solution that's, that's in the city's best interest, and that's why we brought in some outside consultants to help think that through. We had our first presentation with the city on Friday, so I think we now have enough information where we can really dive into that, and we plan to do that over the next few weeks, and, and so that the city can start to see several different options that would be plausible.
Thank you, I meant it, Mr. Zervis.
Yep, Councilmember Wiggles, thank you, we are looking at all options here, so a project of this magnitude and complexity will likely have layered financing of different types for different purposes, so we appreciate the call we had on Friday with Terriff Frisbee and their consultant was, was one of those solutions, and that, that's something we're evaluating, we have calls set up this week to explore those with the city's consultants independently, and to look at different options that may involve the CRA separately from the city for some of the different types of costs that we're looking at, and some of, some of the things we may recommend that the city pay for in cash, just to reduce the overall cost of the, the financing of the project. So, it's going to be a layered approach, and we'll bring options to the city and make a recommendation that, that we feel is a, a response- options to the city and make a recommendation that we feel is a responsible plan on how to move the project forward.
Appreciate that. Getting back briefly to the note of actual planning, like we said, these are concepts. Mr. Frisbee, you know, I do want to make sure that when we start getting into agreements, we're not going to be able to have designed every single building here prior to, you know, prior to, you know, completing the agreements. The idea is, the agreements are supposed to inform the way that we go forward as partners. And so the idea here is, I'm sure it's very important, at least it's important to me, I know it's important to the public, that, you know, it's going to be important contractually for us to make sure that when we get into the actual design of buildings, design of the community center, that the development team and the city and the public are able to work together in terms of those design charades, making sure we have community input in that. I just want to make sure that you understand that that's an important commitment, and I hope I could hear some comments on that.
Absolutely. I personally think it's one of the most important components of the project going forward. And, you know, it's that look and feel, that design is going to really shape this for the next, for generations. And so what we're trying really hard to do right now with staff is to put in place a framework that ensures quality will be met, and that we can have those benchmarks for quality of materials, quality of design. And then, to your point, going forward, we will have those workshops with the city, with the council, to make sure that we continue to iterate those designs until we land on a place where everyone feels it's living up to the expectations.
Thank you. I'd be remiss to say, if I haven't gone to the community center, obviously, you know, hundreds of times, obviously, it's outdated, obviously, it needs to be rebuilt. When I go to other communities and I see, you know, what they do in some other places, obviously, there's a huge opportunity here for improvement. But to some of the older folks here, you know, I think there is a concern that they might be losing access to that. So in terms of community centers, you know, one of the things that I promised I would ask for is, do you know that book, Raton, has a quilters' guild? And in the quilters' guild, they bring their sewing machines, and they do quilting at the community center. And they need a storage space for their community, for their quilting. But, you know, I say that in light, but with all seriousness, the fact is, we have a ton, a ton of people that can use these community centers. Seniors, you know, obviously, seniors to combat loneliness, obviously, having activities here. So making sure we can program some things, like I said, even some small activities. You know, yesterday, I was at my mother's memory care facility, and they had, you know, and they were all gathered around, and they had, like, indoor bowling with these, you know, significantly mentally, you know, disabled people, where they all have dementia. But, you know, just getting a bunch of seniors there and activating them, like, it brought them to life. And it really, you know, it touched my heart to make sure that we have an obligation to do something really nice for seniors, for veterans, for, you know, for children in a new community center. It's an opportunity, if we can plan, you know, together with the community, I think there's an opportunity to do some great things here. And I'm going to make sure that it's in the agreements that you're going to have an obligation to work with the community in planning the actual buildings, and that the architectural is going to be, you know, world-class. So I hope you can appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Lastly, just a question for Mr. Luke Kasek, and I guess maybe Mr. Zervis, or Mr. Brown. My understanding is that generally, with respect to any development project, that impact fees are paid, and that, in this particular instance, that the impact fees paid with the residential portions or privatized portions of this project would be similar to what we do with other buildings. Is that right, so far?
Yes.
And those numbers are going to be in the millions of dollars, is my understanding. It's going to be a significant number. I know we don't know how much it is now, but somewhat in the millions and millions of dollars. And Mr. Brown or Mr. Luke Kasek, my understanding is that as part of our impact fees, and as my conversations with Mr. Zervis have indicated, we have lots of funds that these impact fees, some of them are, they go to land dedication funds, they go to recreation funds, they go to things of that nature. And that, obviously, in this particular instance, that will not be, that will be just like anything else. Is that right?
Yes, there's water, sewer, land dedication, parks and recreation, and the county may have transportation impact fees associated with this project. All the impact fees will have to be accounted for.
But the idea is, we'll be adding to our land dedication fund with the impact fees paid, or at least a portion of it.
Correct. Unless the project provides land and/or recreation facilities in lieu of the impact fees, which is an analysis that's done at the time the project's brought forward for land development approval.
I appreciate that, and I understand that. But obviously, you know, again, we're looking here potentially at the pilot program for the next 40, 35. And as I said before, you know, when we're looking at land dedication fund, and we hear the importance of green space to our community, maybe there's an opportunity for us to do other strategic acquisition of nearby land, that maybe we can have pocket parks or some other things, or maybe we can make a focus of that, or maybe we can say that a certain percentage of the land dedication fund has to be towards acquiring more green space to create more pocket parks here, to make sure that people nearby can also enjoy pocket parks, like the Sand Dune Park, or things like that, close by. And again, it's a larger question, and there's so many moving parts here. I just wanted to make you aware, Mr. Luke Kasek, of some of the things, as we've been talking about in budget season, that we're thinking about, is that I think there's an opportunity here, as we plan this, that, again, this can be a pilot program, but that these impact fees should be going to this, these type of things also. And, you know, and there's an opportunity to do some really great stuff here, and it's the beginning of this next, you know, of this next planning phase that's going to start here, but then eventually move throughout the northern sector of the city, when we start to do the comprehensive plan there. So again, I appreciate it. There's still a lot to do. There's a lot, you know, we're just in the due diligence phase, right? We are still answering, asking and answering lots of questions. Now is the time to do this, to put together this framework. And there's still a lot more to do, but, you know, I'm pleased with, you know, with a lot of the progress, and I hope we can, you know, answer a lot of the questions and correct a lot of the misinformation that's out there. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions for now? Can we open this up to the public comment? Ms. Knuckles?
I had one more question, just, and this goes back a few months, and it has to do with the statement, the city pays for off-site recreation out of pocket. And a few months ago, we brought up the sale of the Western Golf Course and the funds that are still available from the sale of the Western Golf Course, which is a lot of money. And right now, we have the softball for $12 million, and I think it was about $3.2 million for the skate park, and I don't know how much for the tennis courts, even if it's $10 million or $15 million. We still have plenty of money from the sale of the Western Golf Course to cover all of those things, if that was something we decided to go forward with.
Correct.
So that will be, that will be an option for financing when we go forward to.
Okay.
Just one to clarify.
Thank you for pointing that out. Yes, there are funds that this would relate to. Just to echo what Mr. Wigder said, the community space is the heart of this for me, and I think for all of us. So yes, I think anyone would have storage space if need be, but right now, we have a community center built in 1963 for a community one-tenth our size that can't meet our current needs. And that's why this is so important to me. That's why I like the wide green space as part of that, a community gathering space which we have not had. Yeah, you could stand out on second base, but when, you know, the few times, the softball field's not being used, but we've never had anything of this nature. And I think this reflects the vision of what our community needs in 2025 and beyond. I'll just make one other point, and we don't have to land the plane here today. You were talking about a green space of 200 by 300 feet, that's 60,000 square feet. A tennis court requires 120 by 60, 7200 feet. So that's why, again, I'm a little skeptical of adding four more tennis courts there, because that's roughly half the space that would be necessary for this green area. And I think that's important. And I know we might disagree. I just wanted to put that out there for everyone's consideration now. And I appreciate how hard all of us are working, including our partner here, to listen to continued feedback. I think we've made these plans better, softball, avoid some concerns, and we're going to have a state-of-the-art softball facility that's better than what we have now, where frankly, the girls who play softball after hours in the community center is closed, have nowhere to go to the bathroom. There's nowhere to change, but they can't even use the bathroom. I think that's shameful in 2025, and we're now creating facilities that would put them on par with the boys and create a whole range of amenities. So with that, we'll open up, if there's no further, oh, Ms. Drucker.
Just a quick comment, so just more of a thank you. So just to address Mr. Thompson's question about the parking. When I had seen the parking review, and I've had conversations with many of the staff, but I also had a conversation with Mr. Speck myself. Obviously, everyone knows here that I'm highly against parking. I like people to walk and be able to get around and have a neighborhood feeling. And that conversation went very well, because he explained some of the things that we agreed on, some of the things that I disagreed with, Mr. Speck, because knowing my, you know, our city, knowing how we connect. And I appreciate you going back and fixing this so that it's exactly what it is here, which is what we need, which is less parking and having more of the tree canopy. Because if, I always use our neighbors down to the south, if you go to Wynwood, it's beautiful, beautiful art, but it's really hard to walk there because it's really hot. They don't have a canopy. I've done a walking tour there, and it's really difficult. It's great at night, it's just really difficult during the day, and it affects everything. It affects the business, it affects the tourists, and it affects everything that surrounds. So I appreciate you guys continuing to work with us as a partner and our community, and with the feedback. And for all of those out there that are misinformed and some of the things, we do care, and we do research, and we do have the experts on our team that we, especially, I can speak for myself, but we go out and we have these conversations, whether it's parking, whether it's green space, financial or otherwise. So, thank you.
And by the way, in terms of misinformation, lest anyone take my comment out of context, my reference to the 200 by 300 was this particular component of the space, which is one of the many parts of the many acres of public space that are enhancements over what we have. So nothing further now. Public request? Anyone wishing to speak? Public comment on this item?
John Pearlman, 498 Northeast A Street. This whole presentation was discussing the need for financial revenue to this city. That's the overarching benefit that was presented by Mr. Frisbee in this proposal, as to what is the benefit to the citizens? It says it's financial. It's a sham. It's a false premise. Boca Raton does not need any money. We could be the richest city in the country, or one of the richest. We're currently sitting on $677 million of reserve cash. That's not what we bring in. That's reserve cash sitting in the bank, from which we get interest dividends every year. 2024, we got $45 million from the bonds. That's bringing us money from our cash reserves. There was a great, so we don't need any money. It's a sham, this whole thing, this whole project. The Marcy from the Boca Raton Tribune is here today. There was a shocking headline yesterday. It read, from the Boca Raton Tribune, it read, "Boca's new city hall partner, the same developer sued over Surfside collapse." The litigation relating to Tara's involvement in Surfside wasn't disclosed in their January 9th proposal to the city. And nobody from this, from the city council noticed that, nor did their consultant, CBRE, no one pointed that out. No one noticed that. Noticed that. That's very alarming. Marcy, we need a new headline tomorrow, or even today, the Boca Raton Tribune.
Hi, may I, please.
Yeah. Boca, this is the headline. You are another newspaper.
Don't take.
Yeah, this is the new headline we need. Boca's, not you, another newspaper. Boca's redevelopment campus is a sham. Boca does not need any private partner to rebuild City Hall and Rec Center. According, when you look at recent city halls built, that provide a relevance for how much a city hall costs, in the recent city hall built in Sunrise and Clearwater, the square footage bill price is roughly $770 a square foot. For a 30,000-square-foot city hall, as we have on the plan, and a 30,000-square-foot rec center, the cost would be under $50 million. That's pennies on the dollar, pennies on the dollar of the cash reserves that we have in our coffers. Right here, in front of us, we're looking at a breach of duty. A breach of duty as custodians, this city council, as custodians of our taxpayer dollars, our cash reserves, and our public land. We should keep our public land and rebuild our own city hall and rec center. We do not need any private partner. It's a sham.
Ms. Morrow?
Hello, my name is Judy Morrow, at 1305 Northeast Fifth Avenue. Today has been very informative up there and back here. I'm very, very happy that Fran Knuckles talked about tennis downtown. I'm very happy that Mark Wigder talked about tennis and about senior programs, because you can, right now, at Meisner Amplitheteater, you could have just have a DJ, or just have a two-man band, or a woman and a man, whatever, band, and people could go there every Friday night and dance out, you know, and it doesn't cost much. When I went to college, I worked for the city of Fort Lauderdale. The facilities that we have right now, we have to use them more. That would be, but talking about the 100 years today, 100 years, the Boca Raton Tennis Center was built and dedicated by the mayor in February 26, 1966. So it's already almost 60 years old. When I talked to Inky Fisher, the pro that worked there from 1963 to 2000, what do you call it? She said that it was built in 1963. So it's almost 100 years old. So we got to really, really, really keep our tennis in the same location, and whatever happens with this deal, because I don't know, all that kind of stuff, but whatever happens with this deal, we also need 10 courts at Meadows Park. That would be beautiful. And I'm very happy that, you know, oh, and this morning on the radio, you would not believe who I heard on the radio today. Mr. Scott Singer was on the radio on the Brian Kimble Show. I don't say his last name right. He wrote eight books. He's a very smart man. And that was very informative, hearing you today, that you, but you were asking people from New York, Chicago, and California to move to Florida, or to move to Boca Raton. So we need lots of tennis courts. So if you want all those people to move here, please build a lot of tennis courts, keep our tennis courts, dedicate, why move them? Just keep them where they are, and build things around, or something. I don't know. Or build the other things, but keep our tennis courts, and make them 100 years old in another 39 years or something. So we love our tennis courts, and they should be part of the 100, just like in Europe and everywhere else. Thank you, and I appreciate you all. And whoever's going to be the next mayor in seven months, please, over there, one of you, whoever, Mr. Fran Knuckles or Andy Thompson, please keep lots of tennis courts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Morrow, by the way, I just want to, we'll correct some other missed statements, too. I do not encourage everyone in the states of New York, Illinois, and California to move here. I do encourage some people who want to bring some high-paying jobs and some great companies to provide some opportunities here. We are not going to get all those people moving here. Hopefully, we'll get a few companies to add to our robust base. That is the consistent message. Anyone else with public request? Mr. Ungian?
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. So I heard from Councilmember Drucker, activating parks. That's a field there, but I'm pretty sure we're destroying a bunch of parks. So if by activating, we mean bulldozing, we're doing it. I've heard financial, 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 financial. I brought up how much the reserves were in the past, too. I brought up how much the reserves were in the past, too. I don't necessarily think that should be the motivating factor. If it is the motivating factor, following backup on the whole CRA discussion and Councilmember Wigder, I appreciate you saying you hear me. The low-hanging fruit to add a ton of the tax base is right here in this part of town that you won't have John Pearlman or anybody else from the community saying, "We hate seeing what you're doing in our downtown where you're overdeveloping on one, two-lane roads in every direction where traffic is already really bad." The reality is, this is where the downtown in Boca Raton should be, should have been, needs to be developed because there is no plan here. And I heard from Mr. Brown when he addressed me earlier, I've never seen Brandon Shad sitting up there for a single discussion on the government campus. Not once, your Development Services Director. Not once. Not once. Find the meeting for me since any plan was picked. Now, maybe he's behind the scenes writing your TOD ordinance, okay, making the way for you to do the legalese to continue the downtown overdevelopment, but not once as regards to the feasibility, the parking, the traffic, anything like that. I heard a kind of an attack on Stephen Ross, and I've spoken to Stephen Ross maybe a minute and a half in the back here, which was about a minute and a half more than I spoke to Mr. Frisbee. But the reality is, is I heard throughout it, we're picking a partner, not a plan. Okay? And I heard the attack on the plan that they were proposing, but the reality is, the community engagement is completely lacking, hearing the community. I've heard from Ms. Morrow, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting about her tennis courts, yet we end up with two tennis courts. So hearing the community and listening and reacting to them isn't happening. And CBRE is whose partner? The city's or is it Tara Frisbee's partner? Were they the one who was selected by, on some paper in some point in the past, is who's going to be leasing their office space? Again, you know my concerns with CBRE. They continue to be that. You guys should be going after CBRE for their breach of being a true consultant, which I don't think they have been. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call? All right, thank you. Mr. Brown, could we clear up some of the misinformation here? Let's talk about the finances. It would be wonderful if our city somehow had $677 million in an unrestricted fund. We certainly do not. Can you or staff elaborate that and then on some of the other points?
Mr. Zervis can probably give more detail than I, but we have reserves in various funds, and those funds, the reserves in those funds are dedicated to those funds. For example, water and sewer. Those funds are not available to build the city hall.
And that's in?
That's in compliance with state law. But Mr. Zervis can give us more details.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. So the city, the city, I don't know the number that Mr. Pearlman's referring to specifically, but generally, the city maintains cash balances for over 30 different funds that run every operation of the city. And these are not, these should not be characterized as reserves. These are operating cash flows for all the different elements of the city, so running the city's utility system, sewer, water, stormwater. It also includes a number of funds that have legal restrictions on them. So CDBG funds, for example, or ship funds, building permit funds, where there are legal restrictions on what those funds can be used for. So although we invest them collectively in order to make a return on that investment to multiply those funds before they're used, they can't be commingled for use, so they have specific individual uses. I would point back to the budget workshop in July that I presented to your board and to the public that showed our ending, projected ending fund balance for the general fund at about $85 million. That is the projected ending fund balance that includes about $50 million in reserves, some of which, about half of that, is for disaster recovery hurricane reserves, and the other half is to maintain adequate fund balance for financial issues and to protect our AAA bond rating as a city. So that leaves about $35 million of available fund balance for the city's entire general fund. I would also remind the board that our, or the council, that our CIP plan, our five-year CIP plan, is about $1.2 billion. So, and that includes all of the city's activities, whether it's a utility project or a road project. That is a five-year realistic investment in capital infrastructure in order to maintain the city. So, yes, we maintain a cash balance to fund the operations of the city, all of the operations of the city, but when you look at the city's general fund, I think I spoke to that, it's about, projected at about $35 million of available fund balance and $85 million overall. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Thank you for setting the record straight. Mr. Brown, anything further?
Not at this time, thanks.
All right, thank you. I think it was you who said it well, and we've all discussed it as well. I didn't hear so much of a financial presentation here today. I heard more a programmatic one. But part of this whole conversation is to create an integrated space along the lines of Meister Park where people actually want to go. And that, I don't think can be stressed enough, the activity and the vibrancy that would come from a mix of uses in yours to benefits of users of that space, so that there may be a cafe nearby where there is none now for recreation, and people can enjoy an evening out in downtown by going to the community center or seeing some outdoor recreation or some restaurants and shops, the way Meister Park is the picture postcard of our downtown. So I think that is very important to keep communicating, along with the job creation and the mix of uses that creates a walkable downtown and all the other things that were discussed, 15-minute cities, putting people near centers of commerce, adding affordable housing and all the rest. So I hope this update has been informative, and we'll have another tomorrow, and we'll continue to discuss this as we refine the plans. And I do want to thank staff and my colleagues and our partners for continuing to work as we evolve and try to get to the vision that represents the greatest good. Any further discussion on this item? Then if not, we will turn, I believe, to our manager reports. Mr. Brown?
No report this afternoon.
Thank you, city manager reports.
No report.
Thank you. Councilman Reports, Mr. Thompson?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nackless?
I had a question about Memorial Park and some of the emails that we've gotten about that and some of the clarification that we have on that.
Mr. Brown?
And I think Mr. Brown has some misinformation.
Deputy Mayor, we'll have a full report tomorrow. I am still researching some dates that are associated with the project, want to be sure that we have a complete picture of the history. I've got the outlines, but I don't have all of the details yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brown, is there anything you want to share now? We did get some information from the Historical Society that there's some misimpression of a war memorial building that was never built?
I can, some basic details. In 1947, in April, the city council adopted a resolution that said, and I'm quoting from it, "The recreational grounds between Palmetto Park Road and the water plant shall be named and designated Memorial Park." The second thing in that resolution was, "The recreational building to be erected in the said park shall be named and designated as War Memorial of Boca Raton, Florida." All the research we have, that building was never built. There was a building built perhaps in 1959, we're not really sure. I know that the Scout Hut was actually a former army building that was on the property that was there in 1959. There were playground and recreational facilities dedicated in 1959, but no naming of those facilities, whatever they might have been, other than a playground. I believe they were just open fields as War Memorial of Boca Raton, Florida. The other piece of information that I think is relevant is that in 1953, which was six years after the original resolution, the cemetery dedicated our war memorial, the veterans memorial. I don't have the full text with me, but it's definitely dedicated to veterans and for their, we will remember them. So that is clearly a war memorial. I will give you additional details tomorrow, but I think those are the most relevant at this point. There was never a War Memorial of Boca Raton, Florida actually built and erected on the property. But I will also point out that we have continued to refer to this property as Memorial Park since 1947. It's the Memorial Park Tennis Center. Many budgets have had, you know, fixing this at Memorial Park, repairing that at Memorial Park, the skate park was Memorial Park, the shuffleboard, of course, were added to Memorial Park. So it's a name for the land that we have, but not, there is no war memorial per se. I'll have more details tomorrow.
Thank you. Just two follow-up questions now. Since that 1947 designation of areas that restore remain unclear, we have added a number of buildings inside Memorial Park, including City Hall, Community Center.
Correct. We removed the water, we removed the water plant, for example. We added buildings, we moved buildings, we added singing pines, as an example.
And then since, for the most part of the last 73 years, we have observed Veterans Day and Memorial Day, and certainly Memorial Day, I don't know if it's been every year since then, but we've observed Memorial Day consistently over 73 years at our war memorial at our cemetery, right?
That is correct.
All right.
As well as Veterans Day.
Yeah, for many years, yes, until we expanded. Thank you. All right. Ms. Nackless, still?
Just the thing that I do at every meeting is to remind everyone to text ALERTBOCA to 38276 to stay updated on everything in our city. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Drucker?
So just want to give a little update. A couple, myself and a couple of our colleagues attend at our Flora League of Cities, is where all the cities come, they meet. And as we get ready for legislative days and legislative weeks, just want to give a couple of things because they tie into some of the financials and some of the concerns that are coming out of the Tallahassee area. So they gave a couple of leadership priorities, so I'm just going to run down through these, and if you have specific questions, you kind of know where to find me. The House will continue to focus on the CRA bill. So that's something that we passed at the end of our last session, that bill kind of died, there was a committee that was put together. We extended our CRA, we've had conversations about the CRA, but the CRA bill will come back. They will continue to focus on deregulation of small business licensings. What that is, we don't know yet, but that's some of the things that is going to be brought through the Speaker of the House, and the buy-down of the sales tax. So there's a lot of conversation of a lesser sales tax. On the Senate side, the Senate President's going to continue to work on the rule renaissance, and he had a big thing last year, which has got no traction. As everybody knows, the session lasted over 100 days, and the focus was really on just getting a budget to be approved. The governor will continue to push the property tax reform. It's a big concern for cities. It's a big concern for all of our cities. We should all be concerned. For all those of you that follow this, the elimination of property tax would impact cities like ours and smaller cities as well. Where do the cities find the revenue? It's always like, where do you bring the revenue from? So I have some data that I brought back, great tools that we can use, and I'm going to share those with Mr. Brown to share with the council, and maybe they could even publish them online. There's also going to be some, this one was not even on our radar, but there's going to be some amendments to SB 180, and I've asked Mr. Brown to work with legal and get us some information on how that affects us. Apparently, it's a bill that deals with disaster relief and some issues that happened post-disaster. So that's something that we're looking at as well. And then in terms of our primary issues that they're going to focus on, you've been hearing congressional redistricting, property and other tax reforms, DOGE, and there would be attempt to clarify SB 180, and still the continued focus on land use preemption. That means the elimination of home rule, local cities to make local decisions for their local residents, which is what we up here advocate for every year as we approach. And the demand for this will be very, very large this year. So I will continue to work tirelessly for the residents to protect our home rule, and I will continue to provide updates as I am made aware of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Victor.
Thank you very much. Just briefly, thank you, Ms. Drucker, for saying all of that. Yeah, it is a concern to me, and I've heard also that this property tax bill is of concern. Likewise, the revival of the SB 943, you know, the CRA elimination bill, so, you know, it behooves us that when we're trying to plan financially for the future of our city, that we've got to look at a broad variety of revenue sources and doing it in a timely fashion, that it can't be delayed such that we'd be, you know, burdening the taxpayers. And also, of course, if you look at the budget, you know, we can all appreciate that, you know, public safety is just critical, and as a dollar-for-dollar basis, you know, if you look at our ad valorem taxes, you know, the overwhelming majority goes to police and fire. And so it's really a concern that if property taxes were to be on the ballot, you know, how do we pay for these critical services is a question that I struggle with, and that every single person that I've talked to in a financial perspective has indicated the same. So certainly, it's a larger conversation. It's happening soon, right? And session's starting. So it is something we're going to be talking about in the next couple of months. Briefly, Mayor Singer, some things that I've been thinking about as this is the workshop. There are potentially, there are buildings that are under construction in our city, and some of them have taken an inordinate amount of time to be completed. And obviously, we've put together ordinances that buildings need to be kind of recertified structurally once they approach a certain age, but, you know, I'm really getting concerned that buildings, once they start construction, must complete construction within a reasonable period of time. And I've only had preliminary conversations with Mr. Brown on this and just my own preliminary research and discussions with people in the trade, that, you know, there is a point in time where buildings do need to be looked at if they're not completed and weatherproofed in a timely fashion, that that construction delay can cause a potential hazard. And it's something that I hope my colleagues will help me and look into, where we can potentially look into getting an ordinance together, that if a building starts construction and it's not completed within a reasonable amount of time, with all the extensions that one might get due to force majeure, et cetera, that it will then need to be recertified as if it were an older building. Because, again, putting buildings into service that might have structural or waterproofing issues is not something that we, any of us would advocate for. So I hope it's something my colleagues will think about, consider, and once we get some additional research, that we can, that we could talk about that. Likewise, as we're saying from a rec perspective, we had that beautiful basketball jamboree thing this weekend. One of the great things about Sugar Sands Park is that there's so many different types of uses. Of course, there were children inside at the, you know, at the little play center thing, at the little science museum, while the brothers and sisters were doing basketball or something, or something like that. But of course, and I know it was free at this time, but there was a food truck, there was a food truck there where people can get pizza or whatever. And obviously, when we have baseball, you know, they have like a little concession stand at the baseball quad when my kids were doing that, which is cool. But near the southern, near the southern half, you know, where the indoor rec is and the science center, there's really no options for any real refreshments unless you're bringing your own to one of those pavilions. And I hope it's something that we can explore, is like maybe on weekends, or especially on the weekends when there's a big, you know, tournament or something like that, that we can have, you know, food trucks, or some sort of rotating food trucks there, or if food trucks want to be there, they could pay some sort of licensing fee or whatever it is, get food trucks there. And obviously, there are some at De Horneley, too, but at Sugar Sands, I think it could be addition. So just something I was thinking about, that, you know, people, the kids were really, they seemed to really, really enjoy it. And again, when you're there all day, I don't have to tell you guys, there's people on council with young kids, when you're there all day and your kids haven't eaten and, you know, you don't want it to do, it would be great to have some food choices there. So I hope it's something that we can consider. And that's all for right now. Thank you.
Thank you for raising that. As someone who's had kids and youth sports, it's not only just when the kids haven't eaten, it's when the parents haven't eaten. And thank you for your point. Mr. Victor, you touched on force majeure relating to building permit extension. State law is rather permissive in this field. Anytime a state of emergency is declared, the entire clock resets. So that's something that I think we just have to, the confines we have to understand. But I'm sure you'll research more, and then we'll, we can discuss it at a future point. We have a city council meeting tomorrow night, so I'll save my comments for then. If there's nothing further to come before us, we adjourn this workshop at 4:18. Thank you, and good afternoon.